I call this meeting to order. Welcome to our council meeting for July 29, 2025. In the interest of time, efficiency, and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council are given an opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. Thank you for participating in your city government. Tonight's invocation will be given by Father Mark Waiters of Blessed Sacramento Catholic Church. Please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would like to bow your heads and pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of all good things and giver of all good gifts, we thank you for having the privilege of serving our city of Claremont. I pray, Father, that as we discuss the agenda and craft policies for our city, we will always put the people's interests above our own. I ask you to watch over our mayor, Tim Murray, the council members, and all who serve. As we are in the hurricane season, I ask that you keep our police, firefighters, and all first responders under your watchful eye and safe from harm. You have said that citizens should obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. We ask that they continue to guide our great city of Claremont. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public and to help those less fortunate. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Next, we have Police Chief Gracy, who were the minister of office to Deputy Police Chief McMasters. Wow.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I want to take a moment to thank you guys for allowing us to swear in Deputy Chief Michael McMaster before the council meeting. If you would, come up, sir. Michael McMaster has been with the Claremont Police Department over 20 years. He has overseen every unit within our police department. He has assisted on multiple boards throughout the community, 10 years with the Faith Neighborhood Center, and is now sitting on the Lake Sumter State College Board. So that's just a brief overview of his career. If you would, sir, face me and repeat the oath after me. I, Michael McMaster, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Deputy Chief of Police of the Claremont Police Department for which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
At this time, his beautiful bride, Carol McMaster, Lieutenant of the Apopka Police Department, will do the penning. Thank you. Hopefully I'll do better this time than the last time, 12 years ago when I was promoted. So I wrote stuff down this time instead of just trying to push through it. But first, thank you, Chief Gracy, Mayor, council members, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, for this opportunity. First, I want to thank my family for their support and my desire to take this next step in my career, as it will present many challenges. This is not a position or opportunity that I take lightly or for granted. In my tenure at the agency, as the chief said, I've had the opportunity, honor, and privilege of supervising all of our divisions and being involved with all of our specialty units in some way. When Chief Gracy took over the command department earlier this year, he came to me regarding this new opportunity. I told him I had to talk to my family and pray about it. I believe I could have easily spent the next three to five years overseeing our investigations division and been very happy. After numerous family discussions and prayers, I agreed to this next step in my law enforcement journey, not because of the position or rank, but for the opportunity that it presents. The opportunity to continue moving forward. The Claremont Police Department forward toward being the premier law enforcement agency in central Florida. I believe we have the appropriate personnel at all levels to accomplish this goal. It is my intention to work diligently with the members of this agency and the community to accomplish that. Again, this is not a position or opportunity that I take lightly or for granted, and the good Lord willing, we will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Pictures? Deputy Chief, want pictures?
What's that?
You gonna get any pictures? Family, I mean, you have your family here. Anybody having comments?
Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Let me say this, and I hope you don't take this the wrong way, but I've had the opportunity to work with Captain, well, Deputy Chief McMasters now for quite a few years since I've been back in Claremont and started working with the police department back in '07, '08 timeframe. Off and on, we worked together and did some events and things together. And I've always had a lot of respect for, wow, it's gonna be hard for me to say, keep stop saying Captain McMasters now, but anyway, Deputy Chief, and for you to accept this role, I'm just saying, for you to accept this role, that means a lot to me and tell me a lot about the new leadership at the police department, because a couple of years ago, when I think you had that opportunity to be Deputy Chief, and you kind of turned it down, and that's how Chief Gracy got to be Deputy. So now for you to accept that, I think you see something there, and I say, it must be something special for you to go ahead and accept it at this time in your career. But thank you for all the service you've done, and I think we're gonna be able to push Claremont forward, police department further into the future. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. And I'm gonna stop asking you when you're gonna retire now, okay? What's that? Okay, yes, all right. Well, I've always asked him when he gonna retire, because he's been around here so long, he was always there. And when he get upset for two days, two days in a row. So now he's saying four days in a row. Okay, we can handle that. All right, thank you. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Proclamation.
Whereas parks and recreation programming enhance our quality of life by contributing to healthy lifestyles, building community, creating economic development, and encouraging environmental stewardship. And whereas recreation creates opportunities for people of all ages and cultures to participate in activities that encourage health, education, and social interaction. And whereas parks and recreation programs boost the economy, enhance property values, attract new business, increase tourism, and reduce crime. And whereas parks, trails, and open spaces provide encounters in nature, maintenance of clean air, and the protection of plant and animal wildlife. And whereas therapeutic recreation and leisure education are essential to the rehabilitation of individuals who have been ill or disabled. And whereas parks and recreation staff have continued to provide critical services to their communities by caring for the children of frontline workers, providing meals to families, and continuing to provide safe spaces for people to maintain healthy lifestyles. And whereas the National Recreation and Park Association and the Florida Recreation and Park Association have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Now, therefore, I, Tim Murray, Mayor of the City of Claremont in the state of Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hands and called the great seal of the City of Claremont to be affixed this 29th day of July in the year 2025. If I can have Parks and Rec directive, but I inform you, come forward. Councilman, would you like to join me there? All right, the next thing on the agenda is public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the council, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, and name and address. This portion of the meeting is only for items that are not on the agenda, items that are not on the agenda. In the interest of time, efficiency, and ensuring everyone who wishes to address the council are given an opportunity to do so, each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. To avoid disruption of the meeting, speakers should avoid inappropriate language, personal attacks, and derogatory statement and directed comments to the city council. Everyone is requested to be respectful of each other, even when we disagree. Yes, ma'am?
Charlene Harrison, Fourth to Soto Street, Claremont. You don't have a clue what it took for me to get down here, but I'm here again, and I'm gonna push this. And Mr. Peterson, I'll look down to you, and I may have a wing and a prayer with Chandra, too. Y'all need to put it back on the agenda. It was promised to us about this 6:30 versus 3:00. Do you see all of the public that is here, that usually is? They're here for stuff on the agenda. Where are they? I'll tell you where they are. They're all at work. And again, I'm gonna tell you, and this little statement, yeah, I'm gonna have inappropriate language, and I'm gonna have derogatory statements. I want to say, what the hell is going on here? That's number one, as much as you get out of me. And then, what have we got? The same as what we had before that we got rid of on this council? I fought for years and years in here. It's been now 30 years. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be 70 years old. I started in my 30s, trying to open up this council and this city and clean up the police department. Big deal. I thought that was the only thing I was gonna do. Didn't know it was gonna be all of this. And I got a bunch of people and neighbors that wanted to be down here, what's on the agenda later, which is about our taxes. And they can't go excuse theirself like, I guess, Ms. Strange did, and was on the audio in here and talking. And first of all, I don't even think that's appropriate, because there's a lot of places you can't do it. If you can't be here in your seat, you don't get to vote, you don't get to talk. Now, I know we're in the modern age, but people have the right to address their government in person. And do you know why? That's why I'm successful up here, because when I get mad, you don't like it, and you don't want me coming back. Usually, when I walk in those back doors, it's not a good night. It's not here for something fun. And right now, I'm kind of pissed off because of what I had to go through to even get down here. I've got two elderly people that are depending on me today, and here I am. And again, I'm excusing Bill Peterson. I know your heart was good, sir. I know you have a great heart, and you wanted to open this up for our seniors. Well, we're not flooded with the seniors anymore. I do think we should have one for them and one for everybody else. And when it's something important like your taxes, or trying to take your life away, or your neighborhood, or your streets, then we put it on the 6:30. Then the other thing we do is, and I'll go ahead and disclaim that, we use the consent agenda. That's a dirty business. That's what we've always called it. It always will be, all over this state and anybody else. That's where you put stuff on there, nobody hears about it, and I foiled that about shutting this building down every Friday. So enough is enough, people. So I'm gonna ask you two down there, one of y'all can pick it, direct the city manager, get it on the agenda, and we need to talk about this and get it back to a 6:30 meeting. I don't care if it's one a month, and you guys are only down here two times a month. Two times. I'm sorry, and I don't mean that. I know I'm looking at her, because I know you've had problems too, and there's people that have families, and then we got Todd who has a business. But my dang, if Hal Turble can get up at 5:00 a.m. as the mayor and go across this state the next morning and never complain, 9:00 ain't late for somebody. And if you guys would quit the fighting up here and quit all the talk, 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 talking, it isn't the public, because they only get three minutes, like me that just ended up. But I'm gonna keep fighting this. I'm a fighter, and I didn't spend all my 30 years and tomorrow turn 70 for this to go back the way it was. No, 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 and no, the public's gonna come in here if we gotta take y'all out one by one. And like I said, if it's too late for your night-night time, go ahead and resign. We'll have a special election. No problem. And I'm sorry, Todd, to you, because I know it's hot, what you do. It's a hot day. You know, maybe it would be better to come at night, but I don't know. But that's one. I'm asking for one. Forget the two. And by the way, all these years, it always was at 7:00 p.m., and nobody wind a baby cry up here. Nobody. Not one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly, and Ms. Fourth, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask a question, and you may want to answer it, you may not. You used an expression.
Ms. Strange, I'm gonna ask you to hold that to the end and do that during your report. I don't want to, well...
Well, it's not a report thing. We just had a public, a member of the public say we're all going to be taken out one by one.
Well, ma'am, I understand.
And I would like her to have an opportunity to clarify what she meant.
That's what I mean in the next election.
In the next election is what she meant. I did not want that to be misinterpreted, Ms. Fourth, that's why. Thank you. I just wanted you to have an opportunity to clarify that.
Again, excuse me, excuse me. Like I said, that's why I don't want to like get your question in, because we gonna get away from what we doing. This is public comment. If you have any questions, save them. We can ask them at the end, either during report, or maybe I give you time after we get through public comment. I don't want to have all this back and forth here.
I understand, sir. And I just don't want it to be a public safety issue. It led to some issues that have affected our rights as individuals coming to these meetings, statements like that. And I want, I know what she meant, but I wanted her to have a chance to clarify it while she was still here.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Just real quick, I agree with Ms. Charlene, that it would be very helpful if you would reconsider at least one meeting back to 6:30, so that it's available to majority of the constituents that you serve. Paula Hoyzington, 564 East Soto Street. I come to you on behalf of an uncle who's almost 90 years old, and even though it's hot, still enjoys an early morning walk. But when he walks in the community in which he lives, he's faced with sidewalks that are broken, almost falling and hurting himself, sidewalks where the trees are not trimmed, that he has to duck in order to walk. But when we go in other areas of the city, we do not see that. I'm talking about the Lincoln Park area. And I'm asking that the same privileges that you have in your communities, the same sidewalks, the same upkeep of the sidewalks, the same upkeep of the areas that are open to the public, that the areas of Lincoln Park be cared for just the same. In addition to that, when projects go up in that community, when contractors come in to build single-family housing, for whatever reason, they start on them and then they stop for months, and it becomes an eyesore, where the grass grows taller than I am. And our city ordinance, our city ordinance clearly states tall grass, if it's over 18 inches, that you will be subject to a fine. We have a project that's going up on the corner of Blox, on Bloxum and Mineola Avenue, where the grass is taller than I am, and it's been that way for weeks. Now, is it permit, the permit does not end until September.
Bless you.
September, to where the permit ends. So do we have to wait until then to have something done? That's not what our ordinance says. So I'm asking that whatever department is responsible for code enforcement, work with those who are building, and ensure that those projects that are built in the Lincoln Park area are held to the same standard as you would expect in your neighborhood. You would not want to see a project started in your neighborhood when you open the door, that it has stopped for weeks and the grass is taller than you are. With this type of rainy season, we have rotens coming into the area. You would not want that in your neighborhood. So I'm asking you, as a representative of the people who elected you to be up here, that you ensure that every part of the city is conditioned, it is looked at, code enforcement is done the same way as Lincoln Park. And if you don't believe me, just take a drive. Go look at that project on Bloxum and Mineola. It's atrocious. I just ask that you look, you know, my shirt says, be the best version of you, that you be the best version of you as an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Farmer Banks Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day. In this hot and humid weather, you can actually grow crops here in Florida, such as black-eyed peas, okra, watermelon, sweet potatoes, and believe it or not, loofah grows here in Florida. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, happy birthday, America. We are 249 years old this month. It's the longest-serving current charter, government charter, in the history of humankind. So what does it mean to be an American? If you look to the person to your left, if you look to the person to the right, if you look at yourself in the mirror, every single one of us is from somewhere else. We are all immigrants. In fact, the Native Americans came over on the Bering Strait many centuries before many of our ancestors who came over from Africa or came over the Atlantic Ocean from Europe. We are a melting pot of peoples from around the world, an experiment in groups of people coming together, bringing their culture, their music, their food, their religion, and their love of freedom. We are a hodgepodge of peoples who have come here to live together, to love together, to govern together, to work together, and to play together. So the next time you hear a disparaging word about an immigrant, remember, they are talking about every single one of us. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joe Famassey, 2693 Jumping Jack Way. City government never gets to hear good things when they do good jobs. So today, I'm hoping to thank the city for the outstanding bringing the fire department down to Wellness Way, Chief Gracy, Claremont PD, the administration, Officer Cologne, for help start the Wellness Way Watch Group, become the ears and eyes of the neighborhood, and help the police department. The police department has been very active in helping the citizens feel very comfortable in their community, and help discourage the kind of activities that have been coming our way. So I think that you should give them a round of applause for that, and that's due to leadership. I like to thank the city manager for making sure that the funds went to where they were supposed to go. I really appreciate that, and putting good people in place to carry out good services. Ms. Strange, thank you. Thank you for bringing economic opportunity down to Wellness Way. Thank you for bringing more public safety down there. Also, you're carrying out a promise that the county made, which they fell way short of. That leads me into the county charter issue. I went to Mineola, I spoke at their open meeting. They stand with you, Claremont. Hell no to the county charter. Why am I getting taxed twice for services that the county claims that they're providing me? Who provides my fire service? Who provides my police service? Not the county, but they tax me for it. That money should be going to the city, not the county. Todd Howard, thank you. I appreciate all the things you've done for this city in the last two years. I might not always agree with you, but I do find your opinions and your observations outstanding. Ms. Myers, thank you. Thank you for addressing the whole issue with the late payments on the utilities. That was very, very kind of you. Mr. Peterson, thank you for the ambulances, and I hope that you can continue to help bring emergency services to City of Claremont. I try to find something good in all of you, and I think that you need to hear that today, because you've heard a lot of rhetoric of not happiness. But today, I stand here and I say thank you to you as a community. Please stop the county charter. Other cities, I'm going to, they're probably gonna say the same thing, and keep doing the good things you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is public comment. Anyone else in the public who wish to address anything that's not on the agenda, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close public comment. All right. Before we move on, are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Van Wagner?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes, okay. The next portion of the meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if you to do so. Additionally, if any staff member or council member wish to address anything on the consent agenda, you have the same opportunity to pull any item. And items on the consent agenda today are items one through twelve. Are there any items that we need to pull?
Items ten and eleven, please.
Items ten and eleven, okay. Any others? Seeing no others, I'll entertain a motion on items one through nine and number twelve.
Motion approved, items one through nine and number twelve on the consent agenda.
Second?
Have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda, items one through nine and item number twelve. Any further discussion?
No.
Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion passes five oh. Yes, ma'am, item number ten.
Yes, on item number ten, I just wanted to, I had had a conversation with Freddie and just there was not time to get the answer. I understand that there were other Claremont firms that might have applied for this ongoing services. As much as possible, I would like to keep business in the city if we have qualified firms. And so I didn't, I didn't have time. It's not his fault. I just asked him a couple hours ago to find out. I know there was at least one other Claremont business, and I wasn't sure if there were more, and why that Claremont business maybe didn't meet the top three criteria. So for me, that was important. Maybe it's a policy question before we ask Freddie to answer it, but that was something that, on this issue, before we sign ongoing services and don't go out to RFP for Claremont businesses, I wanted to entertain that.
Well, this seemed to be a topic that continued to come up, up and up again, you know, and everything. I think we've gone through this several times. When we put out these RFQs and everything, anybody's out there is eligible to apply for them. Now, we can't make local companies go out here and apply for these RFQs. When they come in, I'm quite sure they scored pretty regular on a procedure, professional procedure, and however it comes out, it comes out, I would say. And of course, I think Freddie and them in procurement have been doing a fantastic job with most of these. And if I'm not mistaken, on this one, it was a local firm that, what I read, I thought was a local firm that had the highest ratings.
Yes, there was a local firm, but there was at least one other local firm that was in the top half-
Yeah.
-that did not make the ongoing services agreement. And I don't know about, I don't know about the other ones, it doesn't say.
Well, again, that goes back to when these are put out. Freddie, you can come on. When they come out, we have criteria and requirement they have to meet, and if they can't meet them, and when they submit their package, they don't meet them, there's how to score and break out. But Freddie, maybe you can shed some light on it.
Yeah, that's correct. Committee actually is the ones that assign numbers or rates each company based on their qualifications. And then I get their individuals' scores, I put them all together and summarize them. And then top firms come up to the top, and the ones not so hot stay in the middle or the bottom range. And then the committee selects how many they wish to want to recommend award to. It could be one, two, three, four, how many they want to submit. In this case, it was just three, the top three. So that's what we have in front of you today.
Fred, let me ask this question. Ms. Strange is concerned with the local firm didn't meet the criteria to make it into the top three. When we submit RFQs, we have requirements and all this that we're looking for. If they don't meet the requirement and make it up to the top three, is it illegal for them to come back and ask you if, why they didn't make the top three? You can tell them why?
Absolutely, yes.
What we're missing?
Yeah, once the scores are out, they're welcome to come and talk to me about it, only me, not the committee members. And I'll sit down with them and explain to them the process, why they were so low, and everything's transparent.
Okay. So the next time someone come over, they have a better idea of what they need to meet, where to go. Well, I kind of asked that question, because I know during my military career, we went for certain awards and we didn't make it. I always went back and found out what I missed in, and I was able to concentrate on those areas for the next year.
Yep. The, the, the companies that didn't, didn't get an award, weren't awarded, they had also the right to request the RFPs or RFQs from the other companies that won, that did better than they did, so they can prove themselves next time around. So they have that option.
But they can come back and ask you, and you can give some insight on what they need to-
Absolutely.
-work on.
Yep.
I guess my issue is, if we want community wealth in our community, and there are businesses who are generally qualified, I mean, I'm looking at the scores for the local business, and they scored sixes and sevens by one of the evaluators, and eights to tens by another evaluator. I mean, this sounds like a business that, it's not like they failed in what they were doing, and they're not, once we pick firms that we're gonna work with, we're not gonna send out RFPs anymore. So now we have a local business who's not gonna get a chance to bid in another year. And I'm wondering if we might consider saying, when we send out these ongoing services agreements, one, it's nice to work with someone local because they're local. I mean, that's, there's an advantage to working with someone local that you can have a relationship with. But also, if a firm is maybe on the edge, could we consider something from a policy standpoint that we say, if a local business meets a certain threshold, they're automatically in our list of businesses that we work with so that we can help them gain the experience they might need?
So I kind of had this conversation with Freddie a little bit today. And this is gonna tie into budgets and a lot of other things. But we really need to send out more of these RFPs and stop using these continuing contract as much. I think many of the folks have gotten comfortable with that. There's been some projects that I have watched that were way overpriced, and that becomes concerning when they're just like, okay, we're just, we're not worried about that dollar. And so by sending these out more often, I think it will allow us to engage with those smaller companies, or those companies who have less experience. And this is something that we've done before, where you say, hey, we want to engage with these, with these companies and let them build their resume. They'll learn how we work, they'll learn what we're looking for, and they'll be able to do a better job of sending that RFP to become a continuing contractor. And hopefully, it forces all of them to sharpen their pencil. So, long story short, I agree with you, but I also think we need to be sending out more RFPs. I understand that puts more work on to Freddie's department. But that's how we begin to work with the community and bring them in and help them help us.
I mean, are we permitted to say that if, you know, we can bring in the local firm or the top five firms, so at least the staff has more to choose from, and then they can, they might be competitive that way? Is that something that we could do in this case?
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I would love to have a local firm do a lot of the work. But then, again, I'm not really willing to sit here and just give something to a local firm simply because they're local. If they're not meeting our requirement, when we develop the RFQ, we have to put out these requirements. And I think one of the things, try to encourage them, I know the one that we had to evaluate for the city manager and everything, it had a criteria in there. One of the criteria was if it was a local firm and was located at a certain place, you got a few more points. See, so I, and I don't know why, I didn't read all the RFQ for this one, Freddie, so I don't know if that criteria, one requirement is in there saying, hey, being a local firm, you get extra points and everything, which encourages that, say, over, over outside firm as well.
They do, but two extra points over a hundred is, it's not gonna move the needle on anybody. And there are times, I agree with you, that having an outside firm is actually beneficial. I mean, I don't think every service is the same. But in this case, we're dealing with the beauty of our community. This is architectural services. I mean, this goes to what our community looks like. And I think someone who has to drive by a business that, a building that they might have designed every day, is gonna pay a little more attention than someone who doesn't. I'm just looking to say if they need a certain threshold. And, you know, in this case, this firm, the local firm scored over seventy-six by every, every team, every evaluator. And to the point, firm number three scored a seventy-four and a half by one of the same evaluators. So I just think that, I mean, they were within one and a half points of the number four position. I mean, the next three, they're all really close to one another. I don't think we're dealing with a big disparity, but the idea of putting, this could be a couple hundred thousand dollars in the hands of a local business that's going to reinvest in our community over the course of the year. And I just, I wanted to bring it up because it seemed important, and I'd like to see us having more economic development in Claremont.
So Mayor, just a couple points on this. One is that, generally speaking, local preference, when it's incorporated into bidding process, whether by ordinance or by an individual, RFP or RFQ, it kind of goes against the idea of competitive bidding. And what they find in Florida law is it really leads to probably depletion of taxpayer money without the benefit. However, by the same token, every case since 1928 in Florida has basically upheld different versions of local preference ordinances that get implemented. The only thing I think that you can't do is make it all about local preference, you know? And so, to the extent that this council wants to have that conversation, my suggestion would be that it think about a policy to implement through an ordinance so that it's uniform across all our bidding, instead of on an ad hoc basis, which may be deemed unreasonable.
Well, could we just approve the top five and say all five are available for-
Hold on, because I think what he's asking for is an ordinance. So can we approve item number ten as is, bring this back, have a discussion about an ordinance, and reassess it? Or does it need to go back to RFQ? Could we change our ordinance and capture, if it captures them? It may not even capture if we change our ordinance.
Usually in your bid documents, there's a statement that says you can reject every responsive bid, you could choose more. So I think under the document, you have the flexibility to do-
So then-
Well, the answer to your question is yes, Councilman.
So that's what I would suggest is, so I'll make a motion for multiple things.
Well, hold on. Do we really need to make a motion? Because that, if I'm not mistaken right now with our ordinance, if we wanted to choose not the first or the top rated, we can choose anybody on there anyway, right?
Well, I would just say, if we, if we pick the top five-
If, if that what you want.
If we pick the top five, it gets us two Claremont businesses, and it gives staff five firms that can bid against each other on projects, which creates somewhat of a competitive bidding without having to go out to the RFP. If that's something we would entertain, it would address my concerns for today. And it, I think it speaks to your concerns, too.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with changing an ordinance on the fly. I'd like to see it come back to workshop.
I'm not suggesting an ordinance.
Yeah, so, well, that's what our council is suggesting, is that we come back to an ordinance. So what I would do is make a motion to approve item ten as is, and request that we have a workshop specifically on local preference for the possibility of amending our ordinance.
Does our ordinance say we have to pick three?
I don't know. We need to look at our-
No, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not comfortable with changing our ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. It's no real need to change the order, because we don't have to just stick with the three right now. Okay? If you want to go to five, you can go to five. If number one rated a hundred and number two rated, Philford rated fifty, if that's the one you want, you can, this council has the opportunity to select that. We still have the opportunity to select whatever is on that list, okay?
So, Mr. Howard, would you be comfortable amending the motion to approve the top five and then bring it back to a workshop so we could address the council, the ordinance in the long term?
I don't have an issue with that. So, hold on, oh, wait, no, 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 no.
Mayor, before y'all do it, you haven't let the public, before you make a motion.
You can in a second, but I need to have conversations because I got a motion going.
And I want to hear from you anyway.
Freddie, is this going to cause problems for you if we do the top five?
No.
Do you care? You don't care?
No, you can do five, do five.
So I'll amend my motion, because there's no second, so I guess I can amend it. Yes.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear a second.
There wasn't a second, so I can amend my motion. All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve item number ten, request for qualification award on call professional architectural services to include the top five, and with a request to bring back to workshop a discussion on our ordinance for local preference.
My second. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I didn't put my hand up because Ms. Strange pulled it, so I didn't have to say my name. I was waiting till she got done. Y'all should let the public. I wanted to say something, and I'm gonna address to you, Allison, for you to understand, and I've been in here so long. I don't want to tell you how many of these good old boys that are around here, that are the locals, that screwed this town up. You want to have an hour lunch with me? I'll be glad to get you filled up and brought you to speed. So that should never be a factor in here. It should be the taxpayers that we've got the best of. And I can tell you one, it's called the Procyae Company over on Park Avenue in Winter Park. Wish I could grab them every time. Every time. Every single time. So y'all need to get that out of your head. But Todd, I could not hear back here what you said, so I wanted to weigh in. What was it that you said? You were letting us know your, what was your mindset on that?
I don't want to move forward on anything on the fly, sitting here at the dais. I'd like to have a workshop conversation of what our local preference is. So I don't have an issue with local preference, but I want to make sure that it's balanced and that we're not overdoing it, not putting ourselves-
Right.
-in any kind of legal jeopardy. So, but we can't do that sitting here on the dais right now.
No, I got you. And, and this thing about, forget the, and I know, no disrespect, Mr. Wall, but we don't need to worry about the court crap and the, and case law. We don't. I can tell you case law, and it's called here at the City of Claremont versus the good old boys. And they've been relentless. You don't want me to say one of them, because he always threatens to sue, and he screwed up over at Lake Winona when you go over that little hump over there. Yeah. Yeah. Cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And did we get our one penny back? Zero.
Okay.
So don't let this ever bother y'all. I, I had to get that on the record. That just should not be a problem. We should be wise with our taxpayer money and get the right person. And there are people that are outside of Claremont do wonderful, wonderful stuff. So.
Yes. Anyone else from the public have any comment on this item, with item number ten? Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Hearing no, seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to council, close the public comment, bring it council. Again, Freddie, I'm going to say this to you, and I keep saying this to you, I think you've done a fantastic job with the procurement office and everything. And as I said before, when we were doing, doing, we ended up rating the RFP for, for the city manager. I didn't feel like we needed to do that. They're the professionals, they know what's out there, and leave it to them. I've looked at all this. I would love to see a local company, one of our hometown company do it, but if they're not qualified, they're just not qualified. And I'm not sitting, I'm not willing to change the ordinance just to try to, try to make sure we get a local, local company if they're not qualified. And as I say, I don't think the order needs to be changed, because we still have the opportunity right now under the ordinance that if you want to go to five, we can do five without changing no one. It's okay. But I appreciate everything, you know. Any other question, any other concern, anybody else?
I mean, I thought, you know, in previous sessions, the discussion was always to get the best qualified person to do the job.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, if we start saying, well, rather than get the best, let's get somebody that's local instead, because he's local and he'll like see the work every day, I don't know if that's an appropriate thing to say, right? You'd rather have the best person, the best architect, the best lawyer.
I do want to get the best, yes, for sure. And I, I understood that we were sending out professional services bids, and this one apparently was done before we sent out the RFP. So this is kind of some old, old RFP that's out there. My only concern is if there are emerging businesses in Claremont, and the taxpayers are putting money out into the community, if there is a qualified local emerging business, I would like to support the local businesses if they are qualified. And in this case, the Claremont firm that was not included was less than one percent point off on average of the next closest one. And it's, that to me is where I go, wait, this feels, I mean, are we really sure about this evaluation? I've raised this issue before. We've got, we're measuring their cover letter. This isn't about necessarily their credentials. This is how their cover letter reads. It's not necessarily the ability of them to draw or build, you know, design an appropriate building.
But I think we're, we're really very fortunate, because we have a procurement department. Other cities don't have it, so they're just, you know, sending these things out. And granted, I mean, I understand it's a point away, but there's always gonna be a winner and a second place in any race.
Sure.
And, you know, somebody's gotta be the winner at some point.
Right. Let me, I'm gonna clear some of this up, though, and I think what she's talking about, if, you gotta listen to the nuance where she's talking about emergence, emerging businesses.
No, no, I understand.
And so when we have businesses who are starting off, they're never gonna beat the big dog. You can't do that. And so if you want to reach in and reach out and say, hey, we want you to be a partner with the city, we want to have a more broad opportunity to choose from, you do have to help those people along. And I think that's all that her or I are talking about. So I appreciate where you're at, but we're just trying to help that new guy up who can't compete against the big dog.
Yet.
Well, and I understand that, that's, like I said, they have the opportunity. If they don't make it, they have the opportunity to come back to the procurement, then we can help them and tell them what they, where they fell short and help them, you know.
But that's what I'm saying. But if they don't have the, if they don't have the resume yet-
Yes.
-we can let them help build that resume. I think that's, that's what we're talking about, or that's what I'm, that's where I'm at.
I think I'd like to call a vote. We have a first and second, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we did. Remember, he made the motion.
The top five, plus a workshop to review our ordinance.
We have a motion as second, go ahead and submit the top five. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion carries five oh. Item number eleven, contract amendment building.
That was me, too. This was one where just in our packet, the information was in Exhibit A. I had asked in my conversation, my review with Freddie, and again, it was a timing issue. I don't have the contract, and this is a, as I understand it, this is a three-year agreement. I just- I just wanted to get eyes on it to make sure, and this could be a question for our lawyer, that we have the ability to cancel at any time rather than doing a three-year commitment. So it was more just dotting my i's and crossing my t's than anything.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so that's why I brought it up.
Freddie, did you have a chance to look that up?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, all of our contracts have a 30-day cancellation clause.
30 days?
Every single one of them.
Well, that's not true because I can think of one off the top of my head that has a 90-day cancellation clause, in fact, two. So trust but verify. Sorry.
They'll have a cancellation clauses, I don't know. It's a standard on all the contracts. Well, it's 36 to 90 days is all, is all of them. They'll have it.
Okay.
Okay, this is the public here. Anyone in the public wish to address the item, may come to the microphone, state your name and address, and have three minutes.
Charlene Harrison, 4th DeSoto Street. I told him he wasn't batting real good back here. You know, Mr. Peterson, you're on fire. Thank you for being wise to catch this stuff. I see Chandra's down there gobbling her head up and down, so she's flaming it down there. Thank y'all for being wise and looking at this. I assume, and so we got to get this right, that we are going to contract with these people. We're not going to have an in-house building official anymore. Is that correct or not? Or what is it we're up to?
No, the preference is to have an in-house building official.
Could you speak up so I could hear you?
The preference is to have an in-house building official. We do not have one right now. Our building official resigned and took another job.
Yeah, I know.
So until we get another one, we have to have a building official here to legally issue building permits. So we can't get one in in a week and a half, so we're bringing in this company that already provides our plan review and our inspection services. This is just an amendment to bring a building official service also to serve in the interim until we can find a building official.
Now, I do echo what Ms. Strange said, so we can cancel this, and this is not, I mean, we're talking, did you say, I have, is it a three-year contract?
That's what's not clear to me. That's why I brought it up.
Okay, well, see, this is the problem. We need to be real clear in here, you know what I mean? Let's talk.
The overall contract is for three years for building inspector, plans reviewer, and then if this is approved, for building official also, but it's an as-needed basis. We can pick and choose at any time. If we don't need, if we hire inspectors, we can get rid of the inspection services if we hire plan reviewers. So we're trying to hire them all in-house.
Okay, let me stop my time because I'll have to do that. No, go ahead, and then y'all need to stop my time because I let him talk, and then I need to add on whatever, and I just lost some time, but that's okay. No, I need to hear you. Go ahead. Sorry, sir.
Well, excuse me, well, Ms. Fourth, go ahead and say what you got to say.
Okay, I should, but he was trying to address it, I get it. He was trying to get my concerns, and that's okay. You know, we're a little council, that's what's so good about this, but I can't get y'all's heads wrapped down around that. God. Well, right now, and I happen to know we have inspectors that are contracted out. I think we only have one, and his name's Larry, that's ours. Is that right? I think, anybody know that? Okay, well, this doesn't go very well. We need to have our own people here, but I'm confused because my husband did 31 years at the City of Orlando, both a state-certified building official, building inspector, and code enforcement, and others. It's not hard to get these people. What, I don't know what the problem is, but I will tell you this, we're having problems right now, and I'm hearing the complaints, and I couldn't say this tonight, and that might be something we address when we get this council straightened out at public portion because our other mayor and councils before, meaning that's not about him tonight, you could go to the back of the line, you didn't have to wait two weeks to address something, or I would have addressed this tonight, okay? We need to do that. Mrs. Smith doesn't need to wait two weeks to come back for another problem. So that being said, we're having problems already. These people are being rude out there. They're wanting to charge because they want people to wait all day to be inspected. I don't know what's going on with the building official or whatever, but that's not good. We need to have our own people that we can put some rules and rein them in. That's my concern. And I, I don't understand, there should be no problem to find one of these at all. So I don't know. We need to start asking some questions, all of y'all.
Well, and that's, that's why I raised it, is I think my question is probably for...
This is, this, excuse me, ma'am. This is the public here. Anyone else in the public wish to address the item, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Anyone else in the public? Seeing no one else, I close public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please.
Mr. Wall, I think probably my question is for you. If I'm understanding what the situation is, is we need a stopgap, we have an existing contract with a professional service provider, and we want to expand the services that that, that contractor provides on an as-needed basis, and I'm generally okay with that. I just didn't have the complete contract in here, and I want to make, I think this is probably more of a legal question than it is policy potentially, because it sounds like it's necessary now. Can you advise me?
It's, it's already in effect. I mean, we're already using the services, so this is just so that we can keep using the services pursuant to a contract. I do have a question, Freddie. Is this based on the prior contract that was with Alpha, or, in other words, is it the same one? Because I found a copy of a building official services contract with Claremont from May 2022, so if it's similar to that, I could advise what the termination provision says.
Yeah, it's, they're very similar to each other, and this, this is an amendment to the contract.
Oh, they bought it out?
Yeah.
Okay, well, in that case, I can tell you what the termination clause is. It says that notwithstanding any other provision of this agreement, city may, upon written notice, terminate without cause and for convenience upon 30 days' written notice to contractor or if they go bankrupt, et cetera, et cetera.
This must send a template.
As Freddie said, most, that clause is in just about every contract we do around here, okay?
Again, trust but verify.
Okay, well...
It's my nature.
You know, and Ms. Fourth, it is our preference to have our own in-house, but understand this, this is a guy that just quit, I think, last week, so we haven't had a term to advertise any, for this position, anything, but I'm quite sure we will be doing that as soon as possible. But in the meantime, we need, we need a person in place, so that's all this is all about, okay?
So I'll go ahead and move to approve item number 11, contract amendment for building official services.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second, go ahead and prove, for approval of item number 11 on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Motion passes five o. Okay. Let's move on to unfinished business. Item number 13, it was garden, lumberyard slash rowhouse paving. Yes, ma'am. Who's, huh?
Did you put it on me, Mayor? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Okay, I apologize.
I'm looking who's presenting.
No, I apologize. So basically what happened is, as, as some of you may recall, we had a discussion a few meetings ago. Ms. Wilson came on behalf of the development, and there's some concerns that you have as a city council about the shape that the development is taking, and in particular, there was a concern about the parking lot being paved pursuant to the PUD, which, as you know, was approved. I mean, you approved the PUD last year lawfully, and as part of that PUD, it does call, and for the community benefit agreement that's attached to it, for the developer to pave a parking lot by the rowhouse. Now, it was my opinion at that time that we wouldn't need to amend the PUD to waive that benefit, because in my view, that's a benefit for the city. You as a city, you know, you can't unilaterally amend things to make someone do something for you, but you can waive benefits that you receive. So there was a discussion about that, and then there was a discussion about the swales, and that seemed like a bigger concern. In other words, that as part of the plan, there are swales that are going right lake, lakefront as part of the drainage plan. Now, that also has been submitted to the Water Management District. They have a permit for developing that. And so what, what we did, Ms. Wilson and I were in communication regarding finding a way forward that would be acceptable to both sides. And what you have, not, I think, on the printed agenda, but on your, in your supplemental packets, is something that I gave to y'all yesterday, little late in the process, no doubt about that, but it's titled a memorandum of understanding by and between the city and Pendler Claremont Lakefront owner. This is a document that, if you did agree to it, wouldn't amend the PUD, it doesn't amend the community benefit agreement. What it does do is it lays out the understanding of how the development will proceed. And so, for example, it says in page one, there would be no paving at the rowhouse parking that Pendler, the developer, agrees to revise the city right-of-way permit to remove the proposed paved parking. Number two, that they would actually work, they weren't able to commit to this at the meeting, but they went back and they looked, and they're agreeing here to revise the Water Management District permits to reduce the size of the stormwater swales, and they've actually provided an exhibit of what that might look like in Exhibit A, and as best I can tell, it appears that there wouldn't be any directly lakefront anymore, although there is some that's needed to take drainage from the roads that are being constructed as part of the development. Number three, there was a concern raised at the last meeting about how the swales would be taking a portion of drainage from the development itself. They're now saying that they will revise the permits to show that they will not have stormwater treatment of the property that they own on the swales on the rowhouse property. So they've agreed to that. They've also agreed to revise those permits at their own expense, and the, the give by the city here is in number five, which is that the city would agree to continue to review plans and issue permits consistent with this memorandum. And the reason why it looks like this is that I, I think all of you may have different things that you have been interested in, or maybe you're not interested, I don't know. But, you know, this has to be something that you look at and present, and I totally understand this is a last second addition to your packet, and that's my fault. I just wasn't able to get to the finish line ahead of time. But this is something that's been represented to me that developers willing to agree to, I believe developers here may have even flown in, and so it's before you to take up and discuss.
Public comment?
Okay, is the, is that, that's it, Mr. Wall?
It is, Mayor.
Okay, is the developer...
Mayor.
Okay, how you doing?
Great, thank you. My name is Rebecca Wilson, 215 North Theola Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, and we, we worked with your city attorney to try to capture some of the concerns that we heard at the last meeting, and just wanted to mention that, that time is important to us. This will take time for us to go back and amend the Water Management District permits, both, we agreed to do that at our cost, but, but also, we just can't be caught in a position where we've mobilized our site work and then we have a permit that is, that is pending and not complete. But I do believe that one of the, the large concerns, not at the last hearing, that I understood, was not just the paving, but also the location of the, the swales and what, what water was being treated in those swales. And so we went ahead and had some preliminary work done by Kim Lee Horn to both determine that we are able to remove the stormwater treatment that was coming from one of the roofs, and we will put that in a vault on our property and, and not treat it in the, the rowhouse property. And then once we removed that and we removed the swales that were needed to treat the water for the paving, we were able to come up with a much reduced swale size, and that is treating the, the improvements that are part of city right-of-way. So it's city right-of-way being treated on city property. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. As your attorney mentioned, we do have a representative from the property owner Pendler here, and we also have our engineer in case you all have any questions for him.
Okay, ma'am, if we have any question, we will call you back in a minute, but in the meantime, this is the public here. Anyone in the public wish to address the item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address, and have three minutes.
Charlene Harrison, 4th, DeSoto Street, Claremont. Yeah, this is why y'all don't want me in here. This is my baby. This lady back here can listen to this. I am the last standing charter member and board member of the Save Our Lakes Committee. That lake is to be protected at all costs. This lumberyard is a travesty. It's one of the most horrible things ever happened to this town. Speedy Wolf, the owner of it, he's flipping in his grave right now because I know that's not anything that he wanted. And this thing about the swales and all of this stuff and transferring the water, I want y'all to look up something when you go home, and I'm going to try to get a packet to y'all. I thought I would do that, but I've kind of had a little sidebar thing I had to do with two elderly people, is the Floridian aquifer. It's not the, called the Floridian, it's the Floridian aquifer. And you can transfer one bit of crap water to another location, and it's still the same crap water, and it's still going down in the ground. We need to start teaching our children this early in school, like I did, and I'll talk about that later. So we need to look at this really, really good, and we don't need anybody else dictating to us what to do, and we need to probably get, I don't know if even St. John's River Water Management cares anymore, they're run by the good old boys up there in Tallahassee now. They're bought and paid for. I'm always going to tell the truth. FWC's bought and paid for, got a bear hunt coming, a trophy hunt, and the water. So unless somebody here protects it, there's nobody else in this state going to do it. So y'all need to look really, really careful. I fought 20 years for that lake, and this is really devastating. And these builders and developers, they don't care. They really don't. That's not their job. Doesn't, like, I always say that, doesn't make them criminal. I don't like them, but they don't care. They only see the money, and they laugh all the way to the bank. So we need to protect her, and I will say in the words of Wayne Weatherby, "Her name is Ms. Mineola, and she lives and breathes, and she's alive." We need to protect her. We are the only ones to speak for her.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is the public here. Anyone else in the public wish to address the item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address, and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close public comment. Bring it back to council. What say council?
So for the most part, I'm okay. I think we need to have a discussion about some community benefit agreement. So in order to fix Mr. Hess's pooper issues, we are going to end up doing a land pass-through, which means we're not getting that community benefit. There was a number that was tied to that, so I'm going to ask for two additional things, and I don't think they're insurmountable. There were supposed to be some funds tied to this, I believe it was $330,000, give or take. Like to see that come back to the city. And then there's a piece of a road on Short Street that we abandoned, that right-of-way, and if you guys could just pull up that asphalt, I have assurances from Mr. Hess that he will sod and landscape, and I think that will also help our water retention issue going forward as well, because it's a, it's a good-sized road that will be removed and made pervious, forward as well, because it's a good-sized road that will be removed and made pervious, which will, I think is, so all you'd have to do is just scrape a little part of the road, and I don't know how much of it is there or not. And I did talk to him, and he's okay with it.
Okay. I just want to drill down into your first point. Do we have a?
A projector?
Projector.
They'll switch over in just a moment.
So, just the statement that the city's not getting the benefit of their bargain, does it, see, look at that. So, I asked the same question, Commissioner, because I wasn't here in the beginning. And so, this is the original boundaries that we believe to be the boundaries of a potential dedication. And you'll see that is 20,882 square feet. The community benefit agreement contemplates a dedication to the city of 17,200 square feet approximately. And so, we have been working with Mr. Hess, and as you all know, there was a dispute as to where his property line existed. And we, in order to resolve that dispute, we are going to quitclaim deed to him, the 829 square feet you see in pink or red, whatever this is. Which then means we are still able to, under the CBA, give to the city 20,000 square feet, a little more than that, 20,053 square feet. Now, it is my understanding that Mr. Hess has asked for a portion of that, which we are obligated to dedicate to the city, to come to him. If this board wants to do the same thing as we are in this MOU, and basically tell us that you don't want that benefit, we're happy to then convey, instead of conveying to you, convey a portion of it directly to him. My understanding is that would then mean that Mr. Hess gets the red, Mr. Hess gets the yellow, and the city gets the green. But we're ready and willing and able to convey to the city, and then if the city wants to discuss whether it conveys to Mr. Hess or not.
So, and I think that's where I'm at, is that I just want you guys to understand that we are going to have to do that, and by appeasing Mr. Hess and making sure that he is prepared to move forward, and it's not going to delay your project any further, we are going to have to bring that land in, and then we're going to have to turn around and dedicate that land to him. And I don't have an issue with that. I've talked with him, and I think that's okay. The only thing that, like I said, my major issues were that this is an 85% impervious project. So, I'd like to get as much pervious back, so if we can pull up whatever he has on Short Street, and he's going to put some, he's going to put some landscaping there, and I think it will help us both out. It's going to reduce some of that water issue. And then, like I said, there was, in the community benefit agreement, there was a $330,000 allowance on that paving side, and I'd like to see that come back to the city. And that will alleviate everything, and I'm comfortable if we can get to those two items.
So, we can agree to the removal of the asphalt on Short Street, and we can also agree to a payment to the city of $325,000 that's under subsection five of the community benefit.
Correct. So, then I'm okay, and I can support this.
I admit, I am confused, and I'm later to this party than you are. I guess I don't understand, and I hate to waste time at a council meeting on what probably, for me, would need to be a workshop, and you know I'm not a big fan of rubber stamping. So, if I don't understand, I either need to get more information so that I understand, or I need, you know, I need to table this. So, whether I do it now or later, I don't understand why we're talking, and I'm not, I don't want to upset someone who might be watching, who says, "Well, yeah, this is obvious," and it might make, it might not be a problem, but we're talking about city land that we're going to give to another property owner, and a lift station that I presume serves the project, again, that's on city property. I'm just, I don't understand why these things are for the community benefit at all, and I'm being asked to approve something that came to me less than 24 hours ago, that I haven't had a chance to get advice on. So, I mean, everyone, you all know me, I like to be thorough, and I have not had a chance to vet this.
So, I've been through this, and I'll try to explain it, and if it works for you, then great, if it doesn't, then that's okay. Could you put up that map that you had, that had the two different colors that involves Mr. Hess? And Mr. Hess is here, so if we need to hear from him.
Also, to be clear, my understanding as to today, what you all would change or not change would be an agreement to the MOU as your attorney set forward. I just agreed to the two additional items. What you all do, once we dedicate the land to you, is up to you.
And that's what I'm going to, so.
Yeah. But my point was, I don't think you're voting on that tonight.
We're not, I'm just trying to get her to be comfortable with where we're going. So, the piece that's in pink?
Mm-hmm.
So, that was disputed through a secondary survey. And so, the secondary survey said that your markers are wrong, said they found the markers that were buried under four foot of sand, and said, "No, here's the markers." So, that piece of property actually does already belong to Mr. Hess, that 829 square feet. There was an 11-foot disagreement. They fixed that.
Just a moment. Board-certified real estate, do you agree with that analysis?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
So, then, the next step is, we have this entire community benefit agreement, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I can be off a little bit, but this piece of property that they were talking about, that was 20,000 square feet, was somewhere in the neighborhood of like $1.1 million value, or whatever it was. Now, part of the problem that I have here is that, in order to keep this out of Mr. Hess's front yard, what he calls the pooper stations, to keep those lift stations out of his front yard, we're trying to create a barrier here.
Stop there. Does the lift station service entirely the lumberyard, or does it somehow service other members of the community?
It services, so, we have a, we have an existing, they are going to update it, run new pipes to it, so it is servicing us and them. So, it's a dual purpose, that's where the community benefit comes in.
So, there's already a lift station there?
Well, it's in the wrong spot, and it's older pipes, and so they're updating, moving it forward.
Now, look, this lift station is farther into the property, so this lift station is actually being a new one, we're going to eliminate the one that's there and put this one here. Now, the thing I'm having a problem with this on the lift station, original plan was to put the lift station in the area of the yellow. That was the original plan.
Well, that's, I mean, this is on the trail, but in someone's backyard, I.
So.
But, but they have accommodated, well.
Again, I don't want to make this a stink pun intended, if this is, I just don't understand what I'm looking at, and why.
Well, I guess what I'm having a problem getting my hand around, yes, we had the problem with the piece of property, which has been taken care of, okay?
Okay.
Now, we're talking about giving away city property to Mr. Hess, so he can, I guess, move farther away, but original lift station, in the first design, this lift station going to be there where the yellow is at. Now, they've already accommodated him by moving the lift station over, away from his property to begin with.
Okay, so the original design had the lift station where the yellow is?
Right. The original, my understanding, when it first came to us, it was where the yellow was.
And that's what was approved by this council?
That's correct.
Yeah, correct. So, in order to, so Mr. Hess has retained counsel, and I would prefer not to tangle with that counsel. In order to make sure that Mr. Hess is comfortable with his backyard and his pool, and all of his visual that he has, where he is retiring and enjoying that property, and does not have a lift station in his backyard, does not want to smell it, does not want to hear it, he wants to make sure that that is maintained and that it has a buffer there. He is willing to do that buffer, so it's no cost to the city. We're not going to use this property for anything anyway, because we can put the lift station on the other piece, and he's going to maintain that. He's also, if they'll pull up Short Street, he's also going to landscape and do all of that, which is reducing even more of our landscape and public works situation. So, for me, this has solved all of my problems with those two additions. I think it solves Mr. Hess's problems. If we can't get, if this doesn't happen, then Mr. Hess has a problem, and then we end up into litigation, and so.
Well, I'm assuming that Mr. Hess was properly notified of the drawings and where the lift station would be, and he had an opportunity to speak at the council meeting?
I can't speak for him, but I think he's well aware of everything that we've discussed.
But when this plan was approved that had a lift station in his backyard, proper notice went out to the public?
I do not know.
Yes.
Hold on, he's here.
Okay.
Listen, I bought that property a long time.
Oh, come on.
Excuse me.
No, I do want to hear what you have to say, because again, I'm new to this, and I.
I'll answer any questions you have. I bought that property a long time ago and fixed it up. I had no clue somebody would put this in my front yard. They were off 13 feet, not eight, and they made a mark in my parking lot and informed me that if they wanted to, they'd put up a cedar fence, and I could look at that, 10 feet out my window. So, that's where this started from. So, I said, "If you're going to put them out there, get them as far away as you can. I got to maintain that property, mow it and water it, and if I got to do that, then you should give it to me."
Let me, I want to clarify, because like I said, I'm going to ask questions, and that could upset somebody. I actually think if this was properly done, from what I'm hearing, the solution sounds reasonable. My question is, was this properly notified at the beginning? In other words, does the property owner in the lumberyard legally and appropriately, where the appropriate procedures followed to move this? Because I don't, I would never have voted to put the lift station anywhere on the trail right here. That would never, that's not something I would have done, but I have to live with the decisions of the prior council, if they were appropriately and properly and legally adopted. So, what I'm trying to figure out, if it was already there, then this solution is a great solution, if it was properly done. But I haven't had a chance to vet it. I have, you haven't had a chance to hear my question.
Well, I would say, I don't have any evidence that it wasn't, and usually, there is a 30-day, you know, appeals period of the, there wasn't, so it's the law of Claremont.
Let me, let me say this, I'm probably the only one up here on this council when this original project came to the city. It was properly handled. It went out, just like it is today, it was advertised, this is what's going on, anybody want to have any say in this matter, you had the opportunity to come here. As I say, the original concept was to have the lift station moved there, moved into the where the yellow, which would have been right up against Mr.
And in your recollection, that's, that was the plan, was the lift station was going to be put between Carroll Street and the trail.
What was that?
And, is it, do you, it was your recollection that the lift station was going to be moved from the interior of the lumberyard project to between Carroll Street and the trail? That was the final plan?
That's one of the biggest, that's one of our biggest concern, we need to relocate the lift station from the interior over to, and originally, it was going to go right up next to Mr. Hess's property, which is the yellow area that's being shown here. However, there was some concern about that, and of course, the issue came up with the property lines and all this, so we resolved that, but now, and in the meantime, they had already turned around and said, "We're going to move the lift station away from his property," since that was a concern, and that's why it's located where it's at now.
And I think if it was properly done, I just.
Now, I, I guess, but you know, I guess what I'm having concern with, and I talked to Mr. Hess quite a few times, been down to the property, looked at it and everything, and I hear his concern about the lift station being right in the door, but we've given him, we've, okay, we gave you back your property, which you originally thought was yours, and somehow the surveys got messed up, we got that, but now, we're going to take city property and give it to him, and move him closer to the lift station that he didn't want to be near.
No, we'd be moving him away from that.
We can maintain that property and put the buffers in there and make sure the concern that we have is taken care of, okay? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why we, why we trying to give away the piece of property?
Excuse me, when I found, when I found out about this, I called in here, and I had you meet me at my property.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
And you were excited that they were going to do the blacktop, and they were giving you this road, and I've named this road affectionately "The Fake Road," because it's not going to even be a road. And when you look at the entire section there, it makes sense to push the poopers as far away as possible, put them out up, and not harm a property that's been there since 1947. That building is a classic in this town.
Yes, it is.
Inventors have inhabited that place, and that's what I do for a living. That place is manufactured, salt and pepper shakers, clackers, that building was a teardown when I bought it. And if any of you ever go to that building, inside or out, you'll lose your mind. It's nice. Some of these guys in this room been in there. So, to do that to that property and think that I knew about it, as a guy that's run companies this whole, I'd have been down here on a first airplane, and I made plenty of noise about it. So, the deal that we've struck with Pendler was, this is me and Pendler, you give me as much distance as you can, don't make a nice sore out of the poopers, I don't want to look at a prison out there, and I'm good. But the long and the short of it is, no, this was not a cool deal at all. The poopers are really blowing, right where they are, they're Dave Wallace's, and he wants them in my front yard, and that's the guy that made the deal with you. So, it's a bad deal, some of you guys weren't in on it, peace, you weren't here.
No.
But that's the truth. So, here we are, you guys got to make a deal, I'm good with it, so let's get it over with.
Mr. Hess, did you talk to them, you're okay with them coming on your property to remove that?
I just told them, yeah, but the truth needs to be told, and I think they should, you know, help out, you know? Here's another thing, you're taking the street, what's it called, Carroll?
Carroll.
Yeah, and you're, instead of running a straight line, you're bending it over. Why? Because Diamond Dave, as he calls himself, I call him Dirty Dave, that guy bent the road and took some of my parking lot. They're knocking 10 feet of my wall off, Mayor.
Oh, which wall is that?
You look at that drawing, and it comes down where the curve is, that's a wall. So, I put that wall up there 13 years ago. You're taking 10 feet of it so that you can have Carroll bypass over Dave's place, where he maintains five acres in the center of that joint, and that's, that's the deal.
So, long story short, this is a terrible situation that we're in. They've worked very hard on getting this, and I'm comfortable with it, so I'm going to make a motion to.
Oh, can I ask one more question? Has Stony had a chance to look at this? Can we service this the way it is? And do we have any idea what this is going to look like for the public using the trail or the roads? I mean, what am I looking at here?
Minimal fencing, just around the generator and the panel, a lot of landscape, and supposedly, according to the mayor, they're not going to smell. They got special technology, and he was going to have an engineer come talk to me, which, by the way, I'd love to hear from an engineer that they're never going to smell, and I'd like it in writing.
Mr. Hess, as I just told you before, the lift station, we have them next to people's homes all over the city, and yes, if something goes wrong with the lift station, you may have a smell, but for everyday use, you would not have any smell coming from the lift station, okay? However, if power go out or something happen, we will help, may get some smell, and we usually pretty good about getting out there repairing the lift station, but everyday operation, you don't have a lift station. The other biggest problem you'll probably have with it, I think may be a concern, is every Wednesday in the city of Claremont, they run our generators on all the lift station to make sure the generators are working properly in case the power go out, so you have about an hour.
Well, the generator, excuse me, the generator they have down there, I've videoed it, it smokes like a train for an hour and a half at a time, so I'm calling, you know what.
Well, well, that's that, this whole lift station is going to be all new, new generator.
I know, you should get that engineer to come down and tell me about it, put it in writing.
Let me, let me offer something, and you tell me if, again, I realize I'm asking questions that could be sensitive and trigger people and things that are long older than I am on this council, is, as I understand, the issue before us is related to the boathouse property with the cash value of the paving and the swales. My question is, can we pin this issue? Would you be comfortable with us pinning this, so I can become more familiar with this? I'm hearing this is going to smell, I'm hearing it's not going to smell, I'm hearing, we've made an agreement, I'm hearing, we don't know if it was properly noticed. I mean, there's a lot in here that I think, you know, at 4:00 on a, this is a workshop conversation, not a meeting, in my opinion, but I don't, if, I just think that if we could pin this part, but move forward with the, with the boathouse property, can we do that?
This part is not part of that.
This is not part of it.
She's just explaining what it is, no. So, it's just.
So, what is this, and how are we involved in it?
This is, when they give us this, when they deed us this piece of property in the green and yellow, we will actually take that piece in the yellow, so this whole yellow, they are going to deed us, and then the piece in the top left-hand corner, we can deed to Mr. Hess.
But I'm hearing tonight, whether it's factually true or not, that perhaps proper notice wasn't made.
No, 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 proper notice isn't. Ms. Strange, I'm going to please ask you, you know, everything that's come before this council was properly advertised and came through this council properly.
I'm going to tell you for a fact, that's not true.
Okay, and I know you keep having this issue about whether it's properly advertised or.
One, for a fact, it's not true, and two, I will ask questions, and I will not assume that staff has done everything perfectly right. I am up here to protect the citizens.
Can you let me know when you're done, and then I can get back up? Okay. He's not done, but when he is, I want to address.
Okay.
You should know that we had a deal with Pendler, and it's in writing, and we've been working it out.
Okay, well.
And that, and that is honorable between Pendler and I, and I just find the whole thing to be in breach. I should already have the quitclaim deed. And, believe me, if there's somewhere else or some other way this could have worked out, it's worked out the best it could work out, and I'll tell you who made it work out, that guy right there and that guy right there. If this wasn't for those two guys listening and being honest and putting workability in it, doing the right thing, we wouldn't even have this to vote about. It'd be game on.
Well.
You can't put stuff like that next to somebody's place, I don't care who you are. It's just, there's nothing good about it.
As I say, Mr. Hess, I know I could visit you several times and talk to you about this project, I know that the lift station was moved concerning you, that related, they moved it away from you.
Even you didn't know where it was really going, because you were way off, and when those guys were off 13 feet on their survey, you were surprised as well.
Right, they were off 13 feet, and you're right, and when I came down and you showed me what was going on, I went back, I think I came to staff and told them, I actually told them I thought they was off 15 feet, okay? I thought, in my estimate, it was 15 feet after I looked at it, but the problem with lift station and this whole issue was about the paving of the Roehhouse parking lot, okay? And, now, I'm beyond with you, I'm not feeling comfortable with this, because as, I haven't had the chance to look at the package. The package was actually giving us. to look at the package. The package was actually given us in here, and I have not read through whatever you all agreed upon, so.
They also took my parking lot.
This is my first time hearing.
I think you need to understand something, they took my parking lot. So instead of having that road go straight like it's been forever, they bent it over, and I'm all right with that too. But I lost ten feet off my wall and twenty some feet off of my parking lot. And, and believe me, who could ever?
But we al- we also, we also gave you Carroll Street, I meant Short Street, right?
Well, if you ask Kurt, if you ask Kurt why you gave it to me.
We also gave you Carroll Street, right?
Why'd they give it to me?
Short Street.
Why'd they give it to me?
Short Street, rather, that section of Short Street, we pretty much chopped it off and pretty much gave that to you.
Yes, and my intentions, my intentions are very clear.
Is there a temperature for having a, a workshop next week to deal with this and get more information?
Yes.
Because, I, I mean, I want to reach a quick agreement. I understand the time, I do. But I'm being asked to vote on something that ca- I literally saw this when I walked in.
I haven't even, I haven't read it, it was in this package here, they had on the dice when I got here. I haven't been able to read it.
I'm willing to make time next week to workshop this if we, if we want to, so it can be on the next agenda. I, if, if we would be comfortable doing that, if everybody can understand that this just came to us, I would be happy to expedite it as fast as we can get the notice out for a workshop. But I don't feel comfortable right now. And it's not that I'm a no, it's just that I don't feel comfortable.
Well, I'm comfortable with it, so I'm gonna make a motion, if it fails, that's fine, and then you guys can bring it back to, to council. But they've done everything we asked them to do, and a little bit more. We've worked with Mr. Hess, we've got this to where it needs to be. And, you know, at some point, you know, look, I don't like, there is no doubt that I don't like this project. There's nobody who's gonna say Todd Howard is a supporter of the lumberyard project. But this is as good as we're gonna get, as far as I'm concerned. They have worked on this diligently, and I'm gonna support them to get this done, and so they can move forward with it. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve lumberyard row house paving changes, including an agreement to remove asphalt on Short Street, and a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reimbursement to the city.
Do I have a second? Is there a second? Here no second, motion failed. Is there another motion?
I move to table it until the next meeting, if we can get a workshop in beforehand to get more information.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion to table item number thirteen to the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Next meeting? So it'd be, did you say you wanted to do a workshop, no?
I think we need to.
Well, I don't think you're gonna get a workshop in before the next meeting. And we need to get this done, because it, it, time is of essence to them, and I, I understand that and everything, but, and I have no problem with tabling, because as I say, I haven't had a chance to wo- work through this, and I'm just trying to get my head around what presented to me here tonight, because this whole thing started off with a community benefit of paving the row, row yard parking lot. Now they're not doing that and everything, and we, we kinda like move out of, the community be- benefit agreement and everything, but however, we get it back with the payment, but however, we start to turn around and give away land as well. So, you know, we got a project that is costing the city a lot more.
I think we're just not as up to date as you are, Todd. I, I don't mind withdrawing the part of the motion about.
But my question is, do you want a workshop? Do you want a workshop before the next year?
I'm willing to say, I'm willing to amend the motion, and if Billy will second it, that it's just on the next meeting, and I can do my diligence between now and then.
Okay, well, we have, we have.
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to clarify. We, we were willing to make this agreement for the Short Street asphalt and for the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment today, so that we can get moving, doing what the city is asking us to do, which is gonna take us time and money with amending both our city permits and our ERP. The, the longer this goes on, I, I can't, I can't promise that we're gonna be able to promise the same things.
Right.
And while I appreciate that Councilmember Howard brought up the, the lift station and what's been going on with Mr. Hess, and I'm glad Mr. Hess had an opportunity to express his frustration and, and, and really acknowledge your city staff that have been working with my client and him to resolve it. That's not really pending before you now.
Right.
Well, whatever you all decide to do, and, and I agree, it sounds like maybe an agreement has been made that that extra land go to Mr. Hess. But, but that's up to you all to decide, and I would hate for it to hold this, this up, because we worked really hard to move in the direction that we heard from council. So I would just appreciate someone considering seconding Mr. Howard's motion, so, so we could move forward.
I have a motion to second on the floor to deny, we'll table it until the next council meeting, and, and I'll be honest, I, I feel like I want to come to you, as I say, I haven't had a chance to look through the agreement, okay? And I'm not probably, like I say, I've been involved with this whole deal from the, from the get-go, and on, and for something to come to me, you know, on the dice when, just given to me today. And I know this has been an ongoing thing, and negotiation been in there, and no one have ever come back to me and say what, what was happening with this, this there plan after the last time you were here, okay? And so I would just like to sit down and get my head wrapped around what's going on here before, before we move forward with this. That's how I feel. But, be honest with you, I probably don't have any agree, disagreement, as I told city manager, whatever the agreement they come up with, I think I may be able to help with that, and it's just that the land property, during the land, has nothing to do with this. However, it's tied up in his motion, and I, I just can't do that.
It was, I did not hear his motion.
That land.
The thing, the thing about me, I want to be able to look at, look at the whole thing before I make, make a decision on that.
My, my motion did not tie that land in there, just so you know. I just want to be clear on the record, that my motion did not tie any land to.
But again, my big thing is being able to sit down and really look at what was just having, literally handed to me before, when I walked up on the dice, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, okay? But I do have a motion to second on the floor. Go ahead and table this item until?
August twelfth.
Can I make a motion to reconsider?
August twelve?
Hold on.
Now, I mean, this, the, the agenda item is for paving, right? And then how did we go from paving to, I thought, you know, this wasn't added into the agenda item. But if it is, I don't understand why, was this lift station already existing, or is this gonna be created?
So, if I can address that.
That has to do with the lumberyard project, correct?
The item that is pending before you today has nothing to do with the lift station or the dedication of any land.
Okay.
The motion, as I heard it, and the council member who made it, was to deal with the row house paving, the row house swales.
Right.
And then his additional request for us to remove some paving on Short Street and to pay the city three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've agreed to all of that.
Right, but my understanding is, why would you want, if we're gonna have that land there, and the opposition was that it would be unsightly for him, if we could ma- the city would maintain the land itself, correct?
This isn't, this isn't a conversation about that.
This, 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 I wanna try to move this on, but let, let's move this on, and like I say, the, I, I, item before us is the paving of the row house. And here's the other reason why I'm not ready to, to say yes to the, what's before us today, is because I haven't seen what you actually did with the swales and all this, the repaving and everything. And I would like to be able to take the time and look at this package, okay? And all, I'd say, yeah, Mr. Howard, you can sit there and hold it up to me, but I'm not really sitting here trying to read through this stuff right now.
It's really simple.
Because I'm trying to hear everything going on here, and all the, all the changes that were made. I have not been able to just look at them, okay? And I probably wouldn't have no disagreement with them once I look at them, but I would just like to see, see what I'm voting on before I get a chance to do it.
May I just say one thing, Mayor? My, my only concern for the city council is, there's no denying the timeline that's been raised by Councilwoman Strange and yourself, Mayor. My only concern is, the way I read the PUDI, and I just want y'all to know this, I'm not sure they're obligated to give us these things. In other words, this looks like them giving us things we're not entitled to. And I, as your lawyer, don't like to look gifts horses too closely in the mouth. Little bit, enough that you understand on the agenda, but that's, that's my, that's why I've presented it to you in, in good, like, I would not turn y'all against it, but for example, they're not obligated to, you know, change the swales, they're, they're not obligated to do the payment, which I think is a substantial amount of money. And I, I'm not taking a policy position, I'm just expressing you my hesitation, because I don't know that the offer will be available.
You, you, you're absolutely right, they're not obligated. However, their prior agreement in the community big giveback was they were gonna pave this row, Carroll Street, dedicated to give us access to the row house, because right now, basically, we do not have legal access to the row house.
And we're still doing that, that's not changing.
Huh?
That part does not change.
I know, I know it's not. I'm just letting him know, hey, this is all a part of the community agreement, in, in the real first agreement, where they were gonna do all this. They were gonna pave the row house parking lot. All this was agreed upon in the community giveback. Now we taking away of, of the paving, and as I told them before, if they don't want to pave, let me know this and everything, but I don't know what's going on. This, like I say, this is the first time I've seen any of the changes that they're proposing since the last time they was here. And I haven't had a chance to look at them. The Carroll Street, and they wanna go back now and do the Short Street and everything, if they wanna give that back to us, it's good. But actually, we taking away some of the community agreement that was agreed upon, and of course, I like the fact that Mr. Mr. Howard said, hey, the money that they were gonna use for the parking lot, the three hundred thousand, it be paid back to the city as a community agreement.
So just so you know, Short Street, because it's not in here.
Right.
What they're gonna do with Short Street is they're gonna remove the asphalt.
I understand that.
And then, at his cost, Mr. Hess is going to.
He's gonna maintain.
Mr. Hess is going to, no, he's, he's going to re, put out the, the grass and.
I, I understand that, I've been in that conversation, I understand what we're doing with Short Street, which is a great deal. If they can remove, move it, that's probably the giveback, they're gonna remove the asphalt, that's fine, because we also have some easement in there along Short Street that we have to protect, and that's one of the things we doing there. And we've already dedicated, told Mr. Hess, hey, we would, we would cut off the Short Street to make it somewhat a private drive for him.
Can we put that map back up of the property that we're talking about?
But I do have a motion, and it's.
I want to reconsider, I'm gonna retake, I'm gonna take back my second, and I want to bring back the motion back to.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment, please?
Yes.
Just to give, just to give council perspective, Dan and me and Kurt have probably worked on this issue more than any other issue in the city, just to give you perspective. So this is hours and hours and hours and hours, working with the developer, working with Mr. Hess. So this is not, granted, we're seeing this quickly in the packet, a hundred percent agree, but I just want you all to know, we have tons of man-hours in this, and I'm pleased that we're finally at a point where all parties are trying to be agreeable and work together. So I just need you all to just have the background, th- this, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to all of you about this, this, we've really worked hard, and I'm, I'm pleased where we're at right now, because everybody's trying to do the right thing, I think.
But we would still, can I see the picture, please? I'm probably gonna withdraw my motion, so I need to see what I'm looking at.
I'm taking back my second.
Can I see where the, the line would be, presumably? Mr. Hess, would you be agreeable if the, the yellow line was maybe three to five feet shorter, so that we can access that backside of the lift station? That corner, I'm particularly worried about the corner.
Miss Strange, can I ask you, let's, let's, that's not really what's before us right now.
I know, but it is part of this agreement that we're talking about today.
No, it's, no, it isn't. So I, if that, we gonna do, dedicate the land, we have to come back and do that at a later time. But this, what before us now is basically, we've included, what, Short Street, removed the pavement, and denying the pavement or whatever they done, the swales, whatever they did with the row house parking lot.
They're moving the swales along the backside of the property, so that it's not on the lakeside. And then they're also giving us three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
In, as part of that benefit agreement.
Where, where does the Pendler property touch the trail, if at all?
Okay, I think I, I just want, I rescinded my motion a second, and I'd like to put a motion for your, to second your, to accept this, item number seventeen now, item number thirteen, I'm sorry.
Just under Robert's rules, you'll have to make that motion, but I will give you the additional language that was in there.
Todd, if you could add to that, if we're going to do this, I, I would like to see if there's land along that trail, that we actually have some trees on this property?
But I think that's gonna be secondary to this.
Okay, 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 okay.
Well, this is supposed to be a community benefit agreement, and we're talking about amending the community benefit agreement.
I think we can get some trees up there.
So if the trail itself has trees.
We have trees along the trail.
Where you are, but not along the trail where the rest of their property is.
The trees we have, we'll clean up everything and make it a little really nice. I, I think what would help here is, is that when the city has a piece of property like that, between that utility, it's incumbent among the owner to maintain it and mow it. So I'm gonna take care of it, great care of it. They, everybody's done as best as they could do with this scenario. He's right.
Let me, let me, let me say this.
We should just get it over with.
Mr. Hess, Mr. Hess, please, let me, I'm trying to move this thing on. I have a recall of this, a second to the motion to table this, so motion denies, there another motion?
We have another motion to accept item number thirteen, the lumberyard slash rowing house paving, along with the secondary items about.
Which was remove asphalt on Short Street, and the remuneration of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the city.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Or second it.
Okay. I have another motion to approve item number thirteen with the addition of removing asphalt from Short Street and paying the city, I guess in general, I think it was three hundred and some odd thousand dollars for the pavement of the row house parking lot, since we losing that benefit to actually make a payment to the city. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And the chair of vote, nay as well, be, so motion passes three to two.
Ms. Wilson, we're gonna need those exhibits for the record, please.
I just wrote on the back.
Item number fourteen is for final consideration, the ordinance number two zero two five days zero one seven.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the land development code, chapter one twenty-three, vegetation, article one in general, section one twenty-three, one definitions, article two landscaping, section one twenty-three, four, parent C installation of landscape material, section one twenty-three, forty-two, parent four, plant material, section one twenty-three, forty-three, E three, F two, K, landscape buffers, section one twenty-three, forty-six, parent two landscaping, adjacent to fences, walls, or dumpster enclosures, section one twenty-three, forty-seven, preferred tree list, section one twenty-three, forty-eight, preferred shrub list, section one twenty-three, forty-nine, non-preferred trees, providing for conflict severability codification, the administrative correction of Scrivener's error, publication, and ineffectivity.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Kurt Henchel, Planning and Development Services Director. Mr. Mayor, just before we get started, the next ordinance is, is essentially related to this as well. Would you like to?
Yes.
Do them both at the same time?
Please.
Yes, go ahead and read. We, both these, the next two items, fourteen and fifteen, is kinda like related, so she gonna read them both, and we, we act upon them separately.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five, zero one eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending chapter eighteen, environment and natural resources, article eight, water efficient irrigation and landscaping, division one generally, section eighteen to twelve definitions, section eighteen to sixteen application of landscape and irrigation system design provisions, section eighteen to eighteen exception to landscape irrigation provisions, division two irrigation, section eighteen two four seven irrigation plan submittal, section eighteen two four eight irrigation system design, section eighteen two five zero landscape irrigation schedule, division three landscaping, section eighteen two seven nine landscaping standards, section eighteen two eighty-one design standards, providing for conflict severability codification, the administrative correction of Scrivener's error, publication, and ineffectivity.
Yes, sir.
City staff is proposing code changes to the land development code regarding landscaping. These changes are focused around water conservation within the city. Several sections of chapter one twenty-three are being amended to create these changes. The amendments involve definition changes for tree types, soil amendment requirements, and the removal of the preferred tree list to allow for a new updated landscape materials list that will be part of the next ordinance I'll go over here, which is ordinance number twenty twenty-five, zero one eight. Within that ordinance, the changes are, really, there's like five of them, five big changes for that. The first is the requirement of soil amendments. This is proposed, this proposed change will require the addition of compost material to the top layer of soil before any landscape material is to be introduced to the parcel. This is to hold water before it seeps into the, the sand that's beneath it, it'll just perk right down to the aquifer. It holds it up just so that initial start of the landscape material has some nutrients to take up. The, number two is requirement for smart controllers, these wifi-based irrigation The number two is requirement for smart controllers, these Wi-Fi based irrigation controllers that operate more efficiently, that will operate more efficiently when detecting weather events in the area. Number three is limiting the amount of sod to be used. This limitation will limit the overall amount of non-drought tolerant sod from the current allowance of 60% to 25%. Four is allowing the addition of photofriendly plants to be used within the landscape. The current plant list is being revamped to a reference, what we call the landscape standards. And number five is reducing the annual water budget for each landscape customer that would be established by the city's most recent comprehensive, sorry, consumptive use permit issued by the St. John's Water Management District. These changes will substantially contribute to water conservation measures throughout the city, which are being driven by the St. John's River Water Management District. Planning and zoning did approve both of these ordinances, 7-0, and staff does recommend approval as well. That's staff's report.
That's it. So that's from council, city staff, so this is a public opinion. Anyone in the public wish to address the item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address, and have three minutes.
Joe Famasi, 2693, Jumping Jack Way. I call this the smoke and mirrors. That's what this is. This has got nothing to do with help irrigation or that other stuff. This is putting it all on the homeowners. Let's talk about when the developers close out there, and 30 days later, the pipes break, and the new homeowner has no idea. There's nothing to detect that out there. My HOA doesn't want to adjust my box for me and make sure that I'm on the water conservation for Claremont. They want to put it on me individually. Your contractor that helped consult on this did not even consider alternative water sources or commercial during, I sat out here from the public and watched. I brought this up at P&amp;Z, and they said, oh, they talked about commercial, but they didn't say about talking about alternative water sources, reclaimed water, other things that could help mitigate irrigation cost. There was nothing worth trying to skew to help the homeowner. It was all about, well, we'll just cut consumption. We'll cut how much lawn they can have. But what about addressing terrible developers with awful, awful contractors that are putting in irrigation systems that are breaking less than 30 days? Has that city ever confirmed that? Do they go out and they say, hey, you guys need to do a better job? Does the ordinance address any of that? Absolutely not. This is ridiculous, smoke and mirrors. Look over here, we're doing this, but you need to address the real issue. The folks that are putting those irrigation systems in, what kind of good job are they doing? Or even worse, what kind of bad job they're doing? So I really hate this ordinance. I think it doesn't really address the real issue. And I think it needs to be sent back and reworked. Why was not an alternative water source, reclaimed water, not discussed in this? Why was it moved away from? In 2022, you re-upped it with your contractor for 70,000 for a contract for 2023, but the city was in a downfall. But you contracted with the same person that did a terrible job of designing the Wellness Way. I can say that, I live out there. So if you think this is going to fix the problem, absolutely not. You need to take this back to some, and have them work on it some more.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Charlene Harrison, 4th, DeSoto Street, Claremont. I was waiting for this to come, but I want to say something, and I can do this if I want. It's very sad to watch a developer come in here and bully y'all, and less than 24 hours you didn't have something in your hands. It's not acceptable, Rick. It's not acceptable. Y'all should never vote on anything in here. I watched Speedy Wolf in that lumberyard, that's what I think's funny, and he cleared the whole schedule first night when he took and swore his oath. That's not, that's wrong, guys. Don't vote anymore.
Ms. Fourth, you want to stick with the issue?
Yeah, don't vote anymore.
Item, hand, please.
With something like that. I'm sitting back there fuming over it. This gentleman is right. We have put anything in in a plan for reclaimed water. And then I'm really proud of my son and daughter-in-law who next door, now we have approved it, and maybe there's something, he's so disgusted with what goes on, he's not come down here to even show y'all. And we put in Florida-friendly plants, and we have got more butterflies and bees than you have ever seen in your life. We should be rewarding people for that. We should be helping people. I know I don't know about Wellness Way, and I hate the whole situation down there. But we need to do something to help the homeowners, and we need to have reclaimed water. We need to hone in on that. Yeah, this is just really a, it's a nothing. It's not going to help do anything that I can see. So we need to do that. We need to make sure, and I mean, I remember where everything, they said you had to, and that was Jim Purvis, everything's got to be perfect, and, you know, Sang Augustine or Bahia grass, well, come to my house, it's all natural. If it grows, it grows, and it's green. If it doesn't, it doesn't. You know, and they were wanting you to put all of this stuff in, and all this fancy stuff, and then it needs more water, and then we talk about the Florida Day and Aquifer again, what we're talking about. So we need to have stuff that we can encourage our homeowners to be environmentally friendly and water-friendly. And we probably do need to rework this, just to make it where it works for everybody, and we get something out of it. There's really nothing out of this that I can see. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public opinion. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address, and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment and bring you back to council, with City Council.
So I'm going to address a couple things. When it comes to water conservation, for me, it's an all of the above. And while it's well-taken that we need reclaim and reuse, I've been pounding that for a while now. We're getting there slowly but surely. We do have some meetings set up that is going to involve St. John's Water Management, Orange County, Orlando, Claremont, and the county, in order to get some movement on conserve two, which is probably the biggest sticking point out there, to the tune of 4 million gallons a day. So just because it's not in this ordinance, I promise you, it's being worked on, had a meeting about it four days ago. So it's getting there, and, you know, I'll be the first one to, we need clean water, we need to cut back on our consumptive use, we need to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. So I'm going to support both of these. There is guidance within this as well, which Ms. Fourth was asking. There is actually a guidance book that goes with it, that kind of helps developers, homeowners figure all of these pieces out. But I think this is just one cog in the wheel to help us keep this moving. And so like I said, I'm going to support it, and just for the council to know, I think we're making some good headway. The final piece of the puzzle is Orange County's being difficult, but there's, you know, we've got some state legislators, and I think they have some bigger tools than we have to get this taken care of, and they're going to use those. So I think we should be in good shape.
Mayor, there is something I need to help...
I was going to ask you about that, because I know Mr. Famasi said that it's on a lot of the owners, but a lot of this goes back to the developers as well in this thing, and I know we just had a state SB 180 passed, and saying we cannot impose any more dire, what, strenuous on developers and everything. So how would this play with that, that new law?
Both of these violate SB 180, okay? No doubt about it. However, I want to tell you a couple things, if I might. You know, SB 180 prevents you theoretically from adopting amendments to your Land Development Code that are, make things either more restrictive or more burdensome. And the Florida Legislature offered no guidance whatsoever on what constitutes, you know, more burdensome or more restrictive. However, there is a lawsuit that's being launched by Y Sirota down in South Florida to challenge the legislation, precisely because it's vague in that respect. I think it's highly meritorious. I think it has a high chance of succeeding. So my own belief is that SB 180 is not long for this world in the form that it is. That said, it is the law of the state of Florida. And for example, in the first ordinance, 2025-017, I think 123-47, 123-48 requiring soil amendment plans, it's more burdensome. It's just another step that has to be done. And then in 2025-018, it requires irrigation systems to be mentioned, CCRs for, you know, new plan development. So whether I like it or not, I think it violates state law. Now that said, the county is also considering something just like this as we speak, and they are voting on it. It is not being taken off the agenda. And I think that part of the reason why is because there's a mechanism in SB 180 that talks about, just because you pass something that is illegal, doesn't mean that it's void from the time you pass. It needs to be challenged by someone. So there's a mechanism, and before someone can file that lawsuit, they have to put the city on 14 days' notice. So if someone does have a problem with it, and they provide the city 14 days' notice, we have 14 days to repeal it if you pass it, or send it to court to figure out who's right and who's wrong. So I give this, you know, information to you so that you can make your own decisions about whether or not you want to pass it, incorporate this. Because right now, you know, one view is that we have our hands tied behind our backs by this legislation, and most, the vast majority of cities and the vast majority of counties are not happy about this.
Right.
So, so the choice is yours. I mean, I think, and if you have any questions, I stand by it.
Well, you're right. Most of the cities and most of the may, like every place I've been with the mayors, different mayors, and other council representatives from different cities, none of us are happy about it. But it is the state law right now, and I know we received, which is one of the things I was going to bring up, and y'all can think about it, that's this council meeting, is the fact that we've received a request to join the lawsuit as well.
Yes.
Okay, and now whether you all want to join in on that, we need to maybe talk about that later against the state, but right now, I'm not really happy to violate the state law, when I know this is in violation and a lot of other things going on. Now, I think we need this ordinance, a perfect agreement, that we need to do some changes out there to make it more water-friendly lawns and everything. I know years ago, we changed, like Sang Augustine, you can only put Sang Augustine in your front lawn line, you have to be Bermuda and the rest of, all these things. Ms. Fourth mentioned it back, because she got natural gas, grass. I took out my Sang Augustine years ago and everything, even though I got irrigation and everything, I took it out. Reclaimed water, I would love to see the city on reclaimed water all over, but I know looking at our system and the way things work, that's not going to ever happen. And yes, we've always had these conversations with Orange County about conserve and ribs and everything, we've had them for years. Now, if we want to continue that conversation, it's fine, maybe they'll give in sooner or later, that we can maybe try to get some reclaimed water down in the Wellness Way area. But it's not the first time we've been having conversations with them to try to figure out these things down there. Now, whether this ordinance actually addressed everything we need to be doing, I'm not sure, because as I mentioned to Kurt once, we talked about soil amendment. He talked about motion or something added to the soil, but it's other chemicals, the other things out there, they can do that, would do a better job, and a little bit cheaper on paper and everything, doing my research on all this. So my concern is, we passing this here, this ordinance right now, amend this ordinance when we know it's the state law out there saying we can't do it. That's my concern right now. And yes, it's going to be challenged in the court, okay? I'm quite sure, and I trust you to say that, hey, you think, think it'll be taken down, but are we going to go ahead and do this? And I know there's a lot of opposition against this law, because it put a lot of burdens on a lot of the cities and counties and everything. It's very burdensome, because basically it tied our hands on just about everything we do.
Yeah, in a nonpartisan way. I mean, no one's happy about it.
Well, and if I may, the test is whether it's more, what, restrictive and burdensome? So if you look at the statutes that were, or the ordinances, excuse me, that we're looking at, you've got a bunch of red lines.
Yes.
This is not new. We already had restrictions on accent, on plant materials, on landscape buffers, on accent walls, on, we already had an approved tree list. We already had irrigation. In fact, we've allowed irrigation not to be replaced if it's an existing property. So that's actually a plus. So I would suggest to you, maybe we're having a legal discussion, I think we agree, that it's, one, unclear what more or less restrictive actually means, which means the law is vague and therefore unenforceable. And, two, we already had these restrictions. So it's not more or less, it already was restrictive. So my concern with this is, I, this had been tabled in the past. I had assured council that I would do my due diligence and use my networks to come up with a solution. And the solution that I presented, in which many of the items are incorporated here, which I appreciate seeing, is what's called the New Yard Pattern Book. The New Yard Pattern Book was a collaboration between some of the greatest minds in Florida friendly landscaping and developers, who came together to say, here's a book that we can use, no matter where we are, and it's got four important elements to it, or its target, what it's trying to achieve. The four kind of key points, if you will, the big four are low water usage, ecosystem benefits, healthy soils, and holistic pest management. And the book includes, and we were provided by, which I appreciate, Kurt, including, a list specific to our region, Florida-friendly landscaping materials. So that's fantastic. So I would suggest to you that if we also incorporate the New Yard Pattern Book as part of this, that what we're actually doing is giving developers more options from what they've had, which is less restrictive than what they had. It may be different, but it is not less restrictive, and it is no more burdensome than going to the same, you know, place you've already been going, the same nursery to get materials that you've already been getting. In fact, for example, we used to say organic mulches are preferred, and now we're saying non-organic mulch is prohibited. So that is one that we had a preference, and we're saying now you can do a natural, non-organic product. So it can be interpreted a number of ways, which does make the statute really vague.
If it's too vague, you can't force it.
But I actually think an argument can be made that we're no more restrictive than we were before.
Well, let me just take one section of it, and that's the soil amendment portion, where you talk about, you requiring them now to go back and add compost to their soil, to the soil, before they plant the grass.
Well, a good gardener would tell you that they had to do that anyway.
Excuse me?
A good gardener would tell you that you have to do that anyway.
Well, not the plant your sod, okay? We're saying before you lay sod, you have to add all this extra compost and everything to your sod.
Well, if you want it to last, you do have to do those things.
Let me tell you, ma'am, I've laid a lot of sod, and never had to put any compost in the area. Now, I may use it for my flower beds and everything, but not the plant sod, okay? I do irrigations, and I understand the problem with the irrigation. I have installed many irrigation systems, okay, and everything, and I understand the problem with the irrigation. That portion of it, I know is more restrictive, and that's the area, and I don't have no problem with them adding things in there to make it more friendly, and that's what the compost is supposed to do with the sod, you mix it in, it's supposed to help maintain the water a little bit longer, and the grass be able to utilize the water, get more use out of water before it dissipate or go in. But it's also other things, when I spoke to them before, it's other products out there we can add to the soil. It's less costly as well, and everything that I think does a better job, okay? More of a chemical soil.
Well, but chemicals, if we're, and I just want to finish my three minutes, is there a reason we need to send this back to P&amp;Z?
No.
No.
Okay. So if we want to have a healthy community that doesn't have pesticides and chemicals, the New Yard Pattern Book provides opportunities. Even if we say that the New Yard Pattern Book is preferred or recommended, it serves also as an educational tool for property owners. It can be provided on our website as something for property owners and develops, developers to look at. So personally, I'm okay with this, so long as we incorporate the New Yard Pattern Book as, I'd like it to be mandatory, but at the very least, preferred, because it does address the, a lot of the environmental issues that we've talked about, and it was done by the greatest minds in central Florida in landscaping, and I see no reason why we wouldn't adopt that. That is a champion-level landscaping plan.
Just a quick question, Kurt. Is this going to affect the downtown tree scape project? Will they have to use different kinds of trees?
Well, I certainly hope they do put some kind of compost in there.
Right.
Effectively, yes.
Is that going to put a delay in the project? Because, you know, a lot of people are anxious to get that up and running, I think, even have the funding already for it.
Yeah, it wouldn't slow them down at all, but they might want to add some amendments to the soil.
So I'm going to move to approve items number 14 and 15.
You have to them separately.
I'd like to make one quick adjustment, if I could, I'm sorry. I just noticed, this has been a moving target, and I noticed under Section 8, this is under ordinance 2025-18, under Section 18-279, I have the May 27th date on there, as this was adopted on May 27. I just want to correct that to tonight's date, that's all. Sorry.
So I'm going to move to approve item number 14, ordinance number 2025-017. So I'm going to move to approve item number 14, ordinance number 2025-017, as amended to incorporate the New Yard Pattern Book.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for item number 14, for approval, item number 14.
Aren't they together, 14 and 15?
We're voting one at a time. Mayor, can I ask if the incorporation of the pattern book is a requirement or a guide?
Requirement.
Okay. It's the second. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
With the incorporation of book as a guide, requirement.
As a requirement.
Okay.
Do I still have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. I thought you put that in the beginning. But I just say before I call for vote, I guess I have nothing against trying to update our ordinance to do this. And my problem with it right now, we passing something that we know is against the law pretty much out there. So, that being said, Councilmember Strange.
Aye.
Councilmember Howard.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
And chair vote nay. Motion passes four to one.
Move to approve item number 15, ordinance number 2025-18, with the amendment to change the adoption date and to incorporate the New Yard Pattern Book as a requirement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of item number 15, ordinance number 2025-018. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Strange.
Aye.
Councilmember Howard.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
And chair vote nay as well. Motion passes four to one. All right. Item number 16, the evaluation of the RFP for the executive recruitment services for city manager.
Lieutenant City Council, Freddie Swarsh, Mayor Director. Back in, back in January this year, we issued an RFP for city manager services. I'm sorry, I affirmed to obtain a city manager. And you, the council asked me to bring it back to today's meeting for the discussion. These are the options tonight are, you do, continue to, the RFP process with direct negotiation with the top firm, to shortlist the firms and do a selection presentation to the council, or option number two, we terminate the procurement process and council can do something else. And that's all I got.
That's all you have? That very short, sweet, sweet, Freddie. All right, this is a public in, anyone in the public which addresses item, make on the microphone, state your name and address and have three minutes.
Brian Bain, 245 Nautica Mile Drive. I was kind of surprised to see this on the agenda. I didn't realize, I thought you'd moved forward with a plan to move the deputy city manager into the city manager position. I think it's too important, the city manager role is too important, to not have a process. You all promised the citizens. You all sat here. You sat here and promised the citizens a process. In fact, I had email correspondence with several of you, and there was going to be a committee that was even bantered around. And then here we are, potentially dismissing the whole RFP and moving forward with what it sounded like the consensus was at the previous council meeting, just moving the deputy city manager into the city manager role. If he is the top candidate, if he's the best person, he will rise to the top in a selection process. If he's not, he won't. And he's still deputy city manager. I just don't understand why we would not go through an executive recruitment process for the CEO of the city and not have a top-notch recruitment process for that role. And I encourage you to move forward with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Joe from Mossy, 2693 Jumping Jack Way. I've been watching you go through this process and back and forth, and I see that it's to terminate the procurement process. I really don't understand why we need to continue forward. I agree with you. I think that the current city manager's been doing a wonderful job, and I hope he'll finish out his term. And I think that he was helpful in bringing in competent help. So we hired a police chief from inside the process, right? We didn't go through all this. So why are we not rewarding people that are doing good jobs? Why are we not promoting people that are doing good jobs? Why do we have to make this a drawn-out, drag-down thing every time? Let's just end this process. What we have right now is doing a really good job. And I just don't know why we have to waste the city's time and the money to go through this. Can anybody explain that to me? Because I'm tired of paying for it. I'm really happy with what I got right now. So how about we just cut the balarkey here and cut this out? Let's end it right now and be done with it. I don't like it that we can promote other people from inside the city, but the minute that a confrontational situation pops up about somebody, we can't go with the same flow. So you're not being fair, consistent as a city. And how are you going to encourage other people that are willing to step up in these roles if you keep doing this to them? I think it's a disgrace, and I think you should end the process. Thank you. Anyone else?
Paula Hoysington, 564 East DeSoto Street. I, too, was surprised to see this back on the agenda. I thought the last time it was discussed that Mr. Howard said for the interim city manager and the deputy to come back with a proposal and present it to you all and that we can end this process. I do think that this position is too important to just kind of like, but you brought in a deputy? I think it's unfair to Mr. Van Wagner to keep having to go through this interim. You're either the city manager or you're not. I mean, at some point, you all are going to have to make a decision. Like, can we, like, end this? We could have gone through the process with the professional group that you were considering and been done with it by now. But it's like, every time it comes up, you push it back. Let's just make a decision. If he is going to be our city manager, then let's make him the city manager and take that interim off so that he can do his job with the deputy. I thought he brought in someone that could be like his right hand, right? That's what I assumed with the other meetings. I'm still waiting on this report that it's on record, that it was requested by Mr. Howard to come back with this recommendation, this report. And I thought also at that time, Mr. Howard said something about, we'll do the report and then we'll, if we remove him as the interim, we'll make the deputy the city manager, and then the new city manager will hire a deputy. But it's like, you all not remembering what you did. Maybe you need to go back and look at your minutes to see what you said you were going to do. And do it! But we should not have another meeting on this. Like, how long is it going to take us to find the CEO of our city? And if everyone's satisfied with the work that he's done, then reward him with being the city manager. If not, move him out and keep the process going and make a decision. How many times do you all have to go through this? It is not fair to him. It is not fair to the constituents that elected you to continue every time to have a different opinion on how we will choose the city manager. I'm just ready to say, you know, Mr. Van Wagner, you're the city manager, you're the deputy. If that's what it takes for us to put some closure at some point, you should want to put some closure to this. And it's really unfair to him for you all to keep putting him through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Patrick Bianchi, 810 West Montrose Street. I want to echo a little bit of what Ms. Hoysington said, but I would also say that we have gone through a similar process. And I ask you the question, did we get the best? I'm going to tell you personally, no. You didn't get the best then. You, between Mr. Van Wagner and Mr. Mathis, you can't go wrong. Having both of them, best of both worlds. I mean, that would be ideal. But it doesn't matter. I've watched cities go through this process. I've done business in cities that go through this process. And they've paid all this money, and they've went through six to nine months of vetting. And there's always going to be disagreements amongst what the best is to you. But understand where we are. Are we in the best situation we possibly can be with this position? And again, you can't go either, wrong with either one. I promise you that. I fear that we're going to spend all this money, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000, we're going to get a list of people, and you got to go through them, and you're going to probably end up in the same result we are now, because it's not broken. It was broken. And no disrespect to Darren Gray. He was, you know, he was what he was. He was great. But the subsequent ones, we, bad situation in all facets. So, and that could, that's a personal opinion of mine. We're in a great spot now. I don't know what that was. The, yeah, I think I just broke it. The community, you can see the shift in culture at this city. As a developer, as a real estate broker, as somebody that is a heck of a taxpayer here in Claremont, the culture has shifted for the better. People are happier. They want to do business in Claremont. That wasn't the story a couple of years ago. People ran from Claremont. They went to Lake County, got everything approved, because Claremont wouldn't be business-friendly or wouldn't present a good culture. We have a good culture now. And frankly, all of you up here have been getting along nicely, which is great. I mean, the culture is shifting.
Don't jinx it, Mr. Bianchi.
Yeah, no, no. The culture is shifting. You can't go wrong with either one. I think the process might give you the best lowercase b. I think you have the best uppercase b. That's my personal opinion. It's a philosophical conversation amongst you all, but I think you're doing the right thing. I think we have the best. So I think we should get rid of this and move on in the transition or whatever plan that you all have for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Charlene Harrison, 4th DeSoto Street, Claremont. I kind of echo a little bit of Paula, kind of echo a little bit of Patrick, but then I got concerns. And right here in this meeting, I would like to meet with Mr. Matthews. If you need my phone number, it's on the bathroom wall anywhere. Don't worry. And there's about three cops that have it tattooed on their forehead. We have, I'm going to give you an example. We have our assistant chief that became our chief, but he's been here 20 years. I stood here and told y'all, knock it off, get it done. This man has been here a long time. Okay, I know Mr. Matthews is not. He was actually my first choice at the first round when we were supposed to do this. But I've got concerns now, and I think the public needs to be able to weigh in on this, if you're wanting to be our city manager. And I'm not sure what is going on here. But people should not be left out of the process. And we don't need to spend $50,000 for $10,000, and I'll donate it to the food bank in Groveland, and I'll be able to, you can put a couple of them in here, you can put it out. They can go there against Mr. Matthews. If he's the right person, okay, he is. You don't need to waste any more time about this. I do have concerns, because there are things that have already been pushed. And I think I heard, so I can say this on the record and give you an example, about this closing down Friday, and I believe that was from your idea and from coming from maybe Maitland. Not a fan of it, and there's a bunch of people not happy. So there's questions we have, and you need to be re-interviewed again by all of us, like we had the tables out here, and we were able to go around to all of the candidates, and we were able to ask them questions. And I really did like him very much. He was our first choice, and it didn't happen. And maybe things would have been different here. I don't know. Well, no, I do know. It would have been, because that was a bad situation, what we just got out of. So, and I know I'd experienced it. So I think there's pluses and minuses, and even if we want, you don't need to spend $50,000 or whatever it is. If you need to put it out and see if somebody shows up, see if they go up against him. He's got a long track record. I get it. I'd love to see somebody that's, you know, probably in his, I say age range, because I could say that. I'm going to be 70 tomorrow, sir. Sorry. It's bad. It's really bad. But that being said, that may want to stay here a while, not here for a couple of years, and would like to, and I know he's, I believe you moved here. You're here in Claremont. Is that correct? Right, okay. I know, I thought you said you were going to do that. So somebody that has an interest here. But we have no fear either way. But y'all need to have a process that is open to the public. You don't leave the public out. This is different with this man sitting in the back room. He did 20 years here, our chief now. And to do that to him would have been spitting in his face, as I come up and told y'all. That was wrong. He was already our assistant chief. He's been here just a short amount of time. I think he's probably a good choice. That's not that I'm bantering him, but I think fair is fair. So let's not let the public out. You've already heard my concerns tonight. We're already leaving the public out, and Charlene ain't happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is a public in. Anyone in the public which addresses item, make on the microphone, state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, a closed public comment. Bring it back to council.
So I'm going to support the terminate the procurement process. I think we're in a really good position as far as the city goes. We have, you know, all the feedback that I'm getting. They're happy with where we're at. I'm very happy with staff. I feel like I can ask them questions, and they're going to give me their honest, professional opinion, rather than the opinion that leadership wants them to give. And that's always been an issue for me. So, I mean, there's people who are, when we have department heads who are doing work, I need to know their honest opinion. I need to know what they're doing. I need to know why they're doing it, so that I can make better decisions up here. And this goes, not just the last, but Darren was the same way. And you towed the line, you towed the company line, and that's the answers we got. And, you know, that's, for me, that's not how I operate. So I'm very happy. I feel like I've been given enough reign to go in and ask questions and get honest answers. And I think it makes, for my process, it allows me to make better decisions, because I have information that's unfiltered and I can process it. But, so, I'm going to support the terminate the procurement process. And, you know, like I said, I'm happy where we're at. I think, I think it's a great team. And, you know, I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to upset the apple cart right now.
I agree with terminating the process. And I do agree with a lot of the remarks that the public has made in regards to Mr. Van Wagner. I do believe he has proven himself, in my opinion, in this role. He has changed the whole climate here for the better. Our department heads are more creative. They have more freedom to talk, to express, to come up with creative ideas, is what you want, in my opinion. A person who will inspire our department heads to creative solutions to the challenging problems that we have in the city. And I would like to see him become our city manager instead of just the interim city manager.
I have to ditto what Mr. Bianchi had said. Since you've come on board, I know there was a lot of problems in the beginning. There was a lot of fear that you weren't going to be able to do the job. You weren't, you know, you didn't have the necessary qualifications that were necessary. But I think you've gone above and beyond this with the, the things you're doing with Lake County, the things you're doing with the state, getting reclaimed water systems here, getting the EMS system on board by, by working with the Lake County commissioners, and getting things done that other people I don't think would have been able to get them done. You're very transparent. You're transparent, I think, with, with all the council members. You're going to keep us abreast exactly what's going on, so we don't get blindsided by the public. So I'm in favor of terminating the procurement process.
I had the same exact reaction as some of the members of the public when I saw this item on the agenda. I said, well, where's the plan? I thought you two were going to give us a plan, and that's what we were supposed to do. Why is this on here? And I had a moment of, wait, who moved my cheese? Right? Because I thought we were going to do a plan, and, you know, it's, well, we're going to send this back out for review. And I'm going to make my comments, but I will say to Mr. Mathis, I think it would help council and public to hear what you shared with me, if you're willing to do that.
Absolutely. So what I, what I shared with Councilmember Strange is that I'm absolutely in favor of, sorry. in, in favor of, sorry, sorry, this microphone is, I can't adjust the microphone too much. This is a position that I want. This is a position I went for. With that being said, Mr. Wagner, Van Wagner and I work very well together and we're working on a lot of big projects together that I'm going to need his help at least through the end of his current contract. So I, I would respectfully ask if, if that's the situation, that you keep him on at least through the contract. And, and maybe beyond if we're still working on some of these bigger projects like Conserv Two, the ambulance service, the fire stations. There's a litany, a plethora of, of big projects we're working on. So I would appreciate, as much as I want to be the next city manager, I do respect the fact that I'm still learning from him. And he and I make an incredible team together. His weaknesses are my strengths and vice versa. So I think to keep us together for at least the term of the rest of his contract is, is very important to me.
And Mr. Van Wagner, we discussed if we were to continue this, I'm just putting it on the record, so I have, I have learned. I have become more seasoned as a council person. It is my understanding that you would be willing to proceed for an indefinite period or for a period, for whatever period that we wish for you to be here, so long as we don't upset you too much, on the same terms that you're on now. Is that true?
I'm not looking to change any of the terms. Matter of fact, you can make them tighter if you'd want and...
Well, don't put too much out there. I'm about to say nice things.
Well, I'm just saying, this isn't a career position for me. This is, I'm trying to help the city and leverage my relationships the best I can and work on things that have been sitting for decades. And, you know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't mind, if I did have a contract, I wouldn't mind putting on there a ninety day out or even shorter because it's not about that for me. It's about trying to leverage everything and try to help as much as I can, if that helps.
Thank you. Now, see, I've learned. I don't want to have to come back to an emergency meeting to deal with a contract, for those of you who have longer memories than, than others. I will say for purposes of anyone who's questioning where my thoughts are coming from, what I've seen Mr. Van Wagner negotiate with state representatives, with county officials, with developers, what I've seen in the world of creative solutions and change in the fire department, in the finance department, in parks and recreation, in public works, in police. For those of you who have known me for several years, have been monitoring this budget for many, many years, and staff have come to us with the tightest budget they know how. We are having extremely complex conversations about issues that are not easily addressed. And my experience of Mr. Van Wagner is that he has approached this position with humanity, with humility, and sometimes with a little bit of humor. And that helps a great deal, especially if you have the five of us that you have to manage, which is his number one job. Which, by the way, to whoever on staff wrote all of our bios and put them in the budget, I finally read it and we are a pretty impressive crew. I will say that. I was, I was impressed. But he has to live with that and he does a great job of it. I never in a million years would have imagined that I'd be sitting here in July and saying, I'm going to vote for, no offense, meant, and I hope it's not taken that way. But I, I truly thought Mr. Van Wagner was interim. I truly believed he was a ninety day and we were going to find another city manager. And as I sit here today, I can't even imagine who else I would want in that seat. So for me, I'll be voting to terminate the procurement process. I'm going to make a motion to terminate the procurement process.
Second. Okay. Have a motion and a second to terminate the procurement process and further discussion.
No.
Here and now, and all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair says nay. Motion passes four to one. With the procurement, uh, procurement process being terminated, where did that leave us?
With a city manager.
Who did, who's your city manager? You terminated the process. You terminated the process of procurement, but you, it was no...
So I would like to make Mr. Van Wagner a permanent city manager.
The general consensus was that Rick Van Wagner would stay as his permanent city manager. I think that's what Mr. Mathis was wanting. I'll support that. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think we want to bring that in as an emergency, an emergency item tonight.
All I'm saying is, you, you terminated the process. Now you need a motion to...
I just made a motion to make him permanent city manager.
I, I want to make sure council's comfortable with that.
Is there any terms to go along with that?
I mean, he's the interim until the end of December, right?
The way that, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what, look, we have an agenda and, you know, for, strictly speaking, under the sunshine law, you can take up matters in front of the public that you want to take up. Okay? Now, the only issue is an attorney general opinion that says that if you think an item is going to be controversial, you probably should put it on an agenda. That said, there's never been a case that has struck something down when it's done in a public meeting. Because the most important thing is that you notice your meeting so that the business you do and discuss is in front of the public. That's the pole star. But I'm just, that's...
So what you're saying is to make it an agenda item on the next meeting?
I'm saying that's a best practice.
Okay.
Well, we have a contract with them. I mean...
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that contract should be expiring right about now. It was, this last one was a sixty day contract.
December eighth.
It's December eighth, yeah.
I think the last contract we did was sixty days.
Each contract's been ninety days, Mr. Mayor, with the ability for that to go into an additional ninety days. So it ends, it right in December is when, when that is completed, if it flips.
Assuming the renewal.
Right, if it flips. If the council chooses to do that.
So do we need to put it on an agenda?
Councilman, I mean, you, you can choose to do as you please. I mean, you can make a motion on, I don't know, I can't read your mind, so I'm not sure what you want to do.
I think a motion was made to make him temporary to permanent, but if that's, if we can't do that here, then we'll put it as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Well, can we just put it, I mean, can we do, can we do a new contract on, on consent next meeting? Because he's got a current contract. We're just amending the contract.
We can do any of the things that have just been brought up.
Just put it on consent as a, an item for changing the terms of his current agreement. He's, he's on until December, so if we just say it's changing the title, so no longer interim and making it indefinite.
As a motion.
We just put it on the, we have to adopt a contract anyway. I mean, the attorney is going to have, right? We make a motion, we still have to adopt a contract.
You, you will have to, if you're going to make him permanent city manager, yes, you need a new contract and everything with all the terms and everything in there to be voted upon.
Yeah, so we said the terms here tonight, same terms. The only things we'd be changing are the interim and the termination period. It's just got a ninety day out. Right?
I guess I'm trying, are, are you asking if by motion you can simply adopt, amend, amend the agreement to have him be the permanent city manager upon largely the same terms except instead of a, a deadline that it's ongoing?
Well, we just amended a contract tonight without some special motion to do it.
I'm just asking.
I just think we follow the same terms that we did for the wild and engineering contract. Put it on consent with the revised terms.
Right. Can you bring us a new contract?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Because we already have a contract.
We have a motion.
It's, it's, well, that was an interim contract on different terms. Now, if you're going to make him permanent, you need a whole new contract to specify the terms of the contract on a permanent basis, okay? You, you can keep renewing this one. It'll be terminal and have, and keep going on contract after contract after contract. But I, it was my understanding after the last time we renewed this contract, which was only for sixty days while we brought this back to council. With the, with the perception that we were going to make Mr. Matthews the city manager in sixty days. So to my, my knowledge, I thought his contract was expired already and not renewed.
Yeah, no, it was a ninety day, it was a ninety day.
It's my first hearing that these, these ninety day contracts, all of a matter, renewed without coming back to the council. They've always had to come back.
That was the first, Mr. Mayor, that was the first contract we did was, it was a ninety day with the ninety day to renew.
With the, with the option to be able to renew, but it still had to come back to council.
And it did. And then you voted again to do the same type of contract with a ninety. And Mr. Mayor, you asked me specifically, personally, don't leave during the budgets. You got to stay. And I told you, I gave you my word. I would stay during the budget portion of this, honoring my word to you, sir.
Well, well, and that's what I'm saying.
I think it's administrative. I, I think all we're talking about is administrative. That we have, that's why I wanted to make sure that the terms were discussed here publicly so we didn't have to deal with that at a second meeting. And he's agreed to the same terms. The only two changes I'm anticipating are the title and the termination. There wouldn't be a termination date. It would just be ninety days out, like his current terminate, like his current agreement has.
It could be with cause or without cause, just like previous.
Well, he, well...
We should legal counsel, Christian.
That's actually not true. So under your charter, there are requirements about what you have to do for your city manager. Usually provide a thirty day notice, et cetera, et cetera.
That's what I'm saying. Under, under the temporary, under this interim, there's no real provision for dismissing him and what it may cost us, whatever. All these terms have to be specified in a new contract. A lot of different terms have to be, but this, this contract he's operating under right now is very short and narrow, okay? And, and what we just did here basically eliminated, we just voted to eliminate the procurement process and hey, we no longer going to look for one. But that motion didn't include it saying, hey, he, he was going to be the city manager. And what's the term of the contract? We need to bring it back at a later date. And with the terms of the contract, he can sit down and agree with, and we sit down here as a council and agree upon the terms of the contract. Is that what you all want to do?
Christian, can you bring that back to twelve?
Yes.
Thank you.
When, when did you say you were going to bring that back?
The twelfth.
I'm not going to hear.
What's the second meeting?
Can you zoom it?
Twenty-six.
That was fun.
No.
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
You good on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, yes.
Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item, new business, item number seventeen. Item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six millage rate. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Scott Bore, Finance Director. Pursuant to Florida statutes, the city must inform the Lake County Property Appraiser by August the fourth of the proposed ad valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2026. The proposed millage rate will be included in the property tax notices mailed to all city property owners to the, by the Lake County Property Appraiser in August. This notice of the proposed millage rate also includes the date of the public hearing to adopt the tentative millage rate, which is Thursday, September the fourth, 2025 at 5:30 PM. The final millage rate for fiscal year 2026 will be approved by the City Council at a public hearing on Thursday, September eighteenth, 2025 at 5:30. The final rate may be lower than the proposed millage rate, but it may not be higher. As discussed at the recent budget workshop on July fifteenth, 2025, is recommended that the proposed millage rate be adopted at four point seven mils for fiscal year 2026. This reflects a decrease from the current year's rate of four point eight eight. And that's staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public forum. Anyone in the public who should address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. This is a public forum. Anyone in the public who should address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Sharlene Harrison, Fourth de Soto Street, Claremont. I'll speak on this and go home before I explode. And no, that's not literal, Ms. Strange. You know, you need to quit just taking things like that because it's, it's okay.
Oh, I don't.
I know.
You know about the winding and...
I know, but it's okay. But yeah, but y'all didn't have a problem with being frisked out here and people coming in, so you better think about it. Okay? We've got all of y'all except for one that promised not to raise taxes. There is no reason for this. And, excuse me. I made a mistake. Here's a copy to, who's taking this for the city? Put that and have fun. Done. Is this ready to go to put this up here? It is? Right here? Okay, I don't know if you expanded. I've had that in before and it pains me to bring my own family's picture in here. My family said one day this state, yeah, all of those are dead but one in that picture. That one right there is my daddy. And I'm a fourth generation, as you know, Floridian. This state is getting too expensive to live in. I knew it after Disney. I sung at Disney at the opening in our high school and everything went downhill since then. I'm sorry, Chandra, because I know you like to go to Disney. If I could open up a hole, then it'd all go away. I grew up in a little town called Orlando, Florida. And now we're here about this. I moved out here thirty years ago to get away from all the crap and the high dollars and the stuff. And now it's hitting here in Claremont. But we have some of y'all up here that you ran and said you would not raise these taxes. And I'm going to hold you to it. And it doesn't need to go to four point seven. In fact, isn't there like a proposal, is it four point two? Okay, well, that's what you need to stay at. It's getting too high dollar to live here. And I know my relatives, all of them said, fight like hell one day. You know, because it's going to be where you just can't stand it anymore. I'm not in the boat with anybody in these taxes. I spoke before. I had a cop that attacked me in here verbally. Because I pay three hundred dollars a year. I don't have the five hundred thousand dollar home. I chose this home. I put my money in the bank and I was able to retire at thirty-two and a half years old after starting at sixteen. I walked out with profit sharing, a paycheck, a pension and healthcare. And my husband, the same thing with the city of Orlando. And those jobs, I do not exist anymore. They do not. I've lived the American dream and been able to raise my son since he was one year old. So it's time for y'all to realize that and we need to stick to it. We need to stick to it and make this place affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Patrick Bianchi, one zero West Montrose Street. I've had the absolute pleasure watching every minute of the budget workshops. A lot of great conversations, lengthy. What I will say is this. Lowering taxes is not the same thing as lowering millage. Lowering taxes is not just good politics, as some people like to say. It's actually really good economics. If you can't afford a building, you don't buy it, right? And a lot of people say, well, if you lower taxes and you're going to subsidize my services and, you know, you'll have to lay off people. We're not there. We're not there. I've, I've, I've seen the budget and, and I've, I've run a very sizable company myself with two people. It is, it is your responsibility to go through every single line item and figure out where you can save. And what I will tell you is looking through the entire budget, your capital projects are insanely expensive. One, as somebody who's in construction and a real estate broker, and two, just pure good practice, I heard competitive bidding earlier. You pay way too much doing things with respect to capital projects. And if you just focused on that, I think you're going to find yourself in a lot better position. Now, historically, the city has gone through so many lawsuits, I can name in downtown four million dollars in settlements, by the way, not insurance paid. So you, you, you've changed your course with a great attorney who doesn't wind you up in a lot of litigation and settlements. So that's great. And you had to pay for your bad one offs back then, but your capital projects and your budget over fifty million dollars, I was going through every single one of them, you need a competitive bidding process. You have to separate those from the budget. And in six weeks, you go through every single one of those and you, 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 you go through the process. Lowering taxes is not politics. It's good economics. And I'll leave you with that. Thank
Brian Bain, two forty-five Nautica Mile Drive. Like Mr. Bianchi, I was, I actually was here physically for all three budget workshops. And it was enthralling. I want to commend, first of all, Mr. Bore and Mr. Van Wagner, and I'm sure Mr. Mathis being involved as well, for what i- in, I think, a long time has been the most transparent and informative budget process in terms of... Um, in terms of information being shared, but also the, the technology that was used to be able to drill down further to find that information. I think that, um, there are some unknowns about the budget that can pre- create some potential problems right now for a tentative millage rate. We are starting or potentially starting a new EMS service that's going to be to the tune of about, what, three point six million dollars? It's my understanding that Lake County, we are hoping, gives us one point eight million. But that's still up in the air. We don't know if that's happening. So if that doesn't come and we make a, a, a tentative millage rate that doesn't allow us to move forward with EMS, that is going to create some, some serious angst in our community about what's happening with EMS. And so I'm concerned about that. I, I think probably should have had a little bit more of that nailed down before we, we said, we're doing this. The proposed rate of four point seven is less than last year's millage rate of four point eight eight. Uh, the rollback rate, uh, I believe is four point six one eight five. Um, I know Councilmember Strange, you've been talking a lot about four point two. Um, I do have some concerns about using one-time money to get there. One-time money for a, a comprehensive plan makes sense. One-time money for potential parks and rec, gosh, that's going to have upkeep. And so that one-time money is going to run away. The one-time money to buy down the rate now, um, depending upon how long that lasts, is not necessarily always the right idea. So, given so many unknowns, I do not think you should set a tentative millage rate anything above the rollback rate of four point six one eight five. Nothing more than that. And then work, if you can, to decrease. But I don't think it's good fiscal policy to go today to a lower rate with so many unknowns, particularly with EMS. Uh, because I think our community has voiced that we want that and we need to make sure that we can pay for that and how we're going to pay for that. Um, so please do not go above the rollback rate for your tentative millage rate today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe from Mossley, twenty-six ninety-three. Um, I think that watching all the budgets workshops you guys have done, you worked really hard to get down to this. And I appreciate that the city manager allowed the department heads to work on this and make it a very collaborative situation where we could get to a better budget. I think you could probably do better than four point seven. I think that it's important that we do provide cities as a s- service from the city. And I don't want to get back in the same old pattern where money, extra money was collected during a quote-unquote downturn. And then we ended up with a sixteen million dollar surplus. I think that you've done, as a council, a better job this time. And probably you're going to keep an eye on the books, fund the projects. I know, uh, Mr. Howard, you were talking about separating out some of those projects and making sure that the funding was secured for them. I thought that was a great idea and something that needed to be worked on. Also, are you prepared for like downturns? What services might need to be reduced because of situations? So I think you made a better plan this time around for the city budget. And, or better planning and better prepared to make sure that you continue those services no matter what happens. So I hope that you can continue that progress. I appreciate you guys. I know you don't hear that very often. And, but I also appreciate department heads out here that worked really hard to get those budgets. They were, uh, had the freedom to be more honest with you and more perspective of what they need. So that's great city leading. Uh, hopefully we can get under four point seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hand. Anyone in the public wish to address the site may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Otis Taylor, um, Caladiceville. Is there, is it a possibility, like, we're talking about dropping, but can we put it out there about the amount? The difference in dollar wise? What we're going to lose compared to, if we do drop it? Because we, with so many uncertainties coming, can that be something that, instead of just the numbers there, but dollar sign? Can anyone speak on that?
Yes. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is a public hand. Anyone in the public wish to address the site may come to the microphone, state your name and address and have three minutes. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, uh, close public comment and bring it back Mr. Scott. Please, sir. You can.
Yes, sir.
Let's go through this exercise that we always do. And I, and I commend everybody. I thank you all for all the comments on, on the budget process that we put in play. Uh, this budget process that we put here isn't something new. We installed a budget process that you all just witnessed three years ago to be more transparent and everything and all. So this isn't something new that just happened and everything. We've been doing this on, on the budget process now for three to four years or so. But Mr. Scott, if we were to, uh, drop it, uh, millage rate is, is four point seven, can you show us what, what the, um, revenues and expenses would be and how we look at, at, at the different rates? Uh, at four points, what, four point seven, four point, what, six and all of them? Please, sir.
The dollar value associated with a, uh, one mil change, so for instance, from four point seven to four point six. Right. Or four point eight to four point seven, whatever it might be. The dollar amounts associated with that is roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ad valorem revenue to the city.
Do you, do you have that in a, in a slide or anything that we can, everybody can see?
Yes, sir, I can pull that up.
Please.
Bear with us just a moment.
Please.
While we're waiting for that, in anticipation of any other questions, is there anything else I could speak to for a couple of minutes?
Well, I, 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 I want to be able to see this and I want the public to be able to see, uh, and of course, there was just a question about can we, can we show this, uh, what's the different rates? What's the, uh, outcome at different rates?
Yes, sir. I have that in a nice data table that I'll be glad to pull up.
Mr. Bore, as you're doing that, as you're waiting, um, I know we've spent, and for the councils, we've spent a great deal of time, uh, Mr. Bore and I. And I am, I am interested in hearing what he says about, um, the four point two. As everybody knows, that's the number that I would like to be at. And I have my reasons for it. Justifies my behavior, for those of you who are familiar with that. A, a bit of a, um, kind of a light bulb that went off today as I was meeting with Mr. Bore. We spent a couple hours together going to, what would it look like to get to four point two? The reason why we're seeing ongoing deficits if we lower the millage. And, and let me be clear, this will happen no matter how we lower the millage. The problem that we have is twofold. It's a combination of things, including the fact that we have historically been a bedroom community. And that the cost of staff burden, meaning what we pay above salary, is increasing at a greater rate than the value of the homes that have homestead exemption in Claremont. That is the crux of the issue. I can say to anybody who has followed me, this staff did an extraordinary job of cutting where it could cut, of coming in lean. I would say most departments are operating in what I would say is the ninety-five to ninety-eight percent. There might be a little bit of fluff in there, but listen, I would bring a scalpel and have a hard time finding the fat. So the issue that we identified is the fact that we are a bedroom community. That's the issue. Secondary issue that we can control is the fact that our health insurance costs rise as much as they do each year. So staff is working on that to see where we can save some funds. What was fascinating was when Mr. Bore and I looked at two factors in our budget today. One was if we could save half a million of the nine million dollars we're projecting for our health insurance costs for next year. That had a significant impact on our budget. The second thing that had a significant impact was the honest assessment of the annexations and the expected growth in this community. Mr. Van Wagner can speak to it in greater detail, but we got down to the weeds to say, how much did we grow when we looked at the annexations that we brought in this year? How many annexations have we already approved for fiscal year twenty-six? How many do we anticipate? And what of those, most importantly, are commercial? Because it's going to be commercial real estate that helps us drive down the millage rate. This is why I've been so, I think instinctively, I couldn't articulate it before. I apologize, I wasn't sandbagging anybody. But this is why I've been so committed to getting a new comprehensive plan and code. Because what we must do if we want to have a lower cost of living for our citizens is increase our revenues from commercial projects. So we have to do that well and we have to do it intentionally so that we still have a beautiful community where we can raise our families, right? That's why, to me, that's the most important thing. But Mr. Bore, as you're bracing yourself for the, for the, you know, the five, the, the five of us, understanding four point two is a number I want to get to. I'd like you to speak to that, to the council, because I'll say it all day long. But I think if you can hear what Scott and I have been looking at, what Mr. Bore and I have been looking at, it'll help you. And even if you don't feel comfortable joining me now at four point two, I do want you to be able to see what we're looking at.
Right. I looked at, he showed me what it would be at four point two and it would hurt our community if we went at four point two now.
Has anything changed since then, Mr. Bore? See, part of the challenge, I was, I think, the last meeting that everybody had. Part of the challenge was that when Mr. Bore ran these first numbers, it was taking all of these projects that we might want to do and saying, we all do everything. We have everything we could possibly want to have.
Right. I, I understand if I can stop you for a second. My concern is, which is, the reality is, the cost of living is going to go up continuously. The cost for materials, goods, um, providing salaries, benefits, all of those things are going to go up regardless, no matter what we do. We cannot change that. So, in my opinion, we want to put the city in the best possible position to be able to maintain those things that you're saying. And like you said, with having commercial, that helps with that and whatnot. But we have to be realistic. The cost of living is not going down. You know, like, for example, remember when the recession happened and Panera Bread said, oh, we're going to raise it fifteen cents because of cheese? They never lowered it. So stuff like that is not going to be lowered. Those things are going to continue to grow and go up. So we have to better plan for that. And I just don't think it's realistic to think that where we're at now, that we can go to four point two with the economy the way that it is. Because we have expenses. Building, I'm sure our builder here could tell you, materials aren't going down. They're costing more. Nothing, gas is not going, I mean, you know what I'm saying? These, these things are going to always go up. So we have to plan effectively for that, in my opinion. And four point two, just, I don't see that.
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is the table that you were asking for. It's on the, the table on the right-hand side, uh, with the headers, rate, estimated ad valorem to city, change in ad valorem revenue, and then the estimated city tax paid. So as this shows at a, and it's highlighted there, at four point seven, the city would receive just about twenty-nine point seven million dollars in total. Um, and if you follow it to the right, for a property that has a valuation of two hundred thousand dollars, that city tax bill would be one hundred, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. If you go down to the, uh, the rate just above it, which is the rollback, four point six one eight five, follow it to the right, that same property valued at two hundred thousand dollars is, the city tax bill is about twenty dollars less.
Twenty dollars less, okay.
And you can see all the other values there on the table as well. I believe this is what you were asking about.
No, I, I, I would like to see the chart I saw yesterday, you showed me yesterday, where we had all the different rates and with the.
Yes, sir.
Plug in the, uh, uh, fund balances and all these different things. Yes, sir.
Okay. So this, uh, since the workshops and the changes that came out of those workshops, uh, myself and the city manager's office have, have done a lot of modeling under a lot of different scenarios. Um, as was mentioned earlier, the primary factor or variable in any of these calculations is what you believe the growth rate within the city's taxable assessed property will be. So for this purposes here, in, in this pro forma, uh, what we're showing is a declining millage rate over the next five years. So twenty-five, or the fiscal year that we're budgeting for, twenty-six, on out to twenty-thirty. And in this five-year period, we're showing a declining millage rate from four point seven down to four point three. And that, and then based off of a annual growth rate of ten percent citywide, and then an assumed growth rate of twelve percent just in the CRA alone, um, for this year, uh, the net amount to the general fund is twenty-nine point two million dollars, and you can follow that across the other, uh, five years. So with that ad valorem pro forma established, now switch over here to a, a general fund pro forma to see what that looks like, um, for that same five-year period. And if you follow this down, uh, in twenty-six, your revenues over expenditures of, would be at a loss of four point nine million dollars. And then here, Mayor, is the table that you was asking for. What does this pro forma with these assumptions and, and additional assumptions, how does that impact where we're at with our fund balances? Uh, so, uh, beginning the year, we're estimated to start at twenty-six point seven, or, excuse me, twenty-six point three million dollars. With that use of fund balance reserves, we'd drop it down to twenty-one point three million dollars. Excuse me, fifteen point, you're, you're following me. Fifteen point one million dollar fund balance requirement. Uh, so we would be over our policy at the end of this year at, by over six point one million dollars. So we are purposely spending down that, uh, excess fund balance reserve that exists. If you follow this pro forma across, um, by the third year, we're actually slightly below what our twenty-five percent fund balance requirement is. And if you continue that out to five years, uh, not only are we below our fund balance requirement, but, uh, in this scenario, we've actually depleted that unassigned fund balance reserve. Now, again, this is a pro forma. It's based on a lot of assumptions and we could debate assumptions till the cows come home.
Yes.
But i- i- in the overwhelming amount of all of the different modeling and, and pro formas that I've worked on with the city manager's office, a consistent pattern definitely existed. And that was that by year three, we're starting to see challenges. Either with, in meeting our fund balance, uh, fund balance policy requirement, or where the total level of the unassigned fund balances are. So therefore, on a long-range basis, it's our professional opinion that a four point seven rate is a, um, is, is a reasonable rate to establish for this fiscal year with the long-term concerns in mind. Now, that being said, um, I think a four point two rate is a reasonable goal. And the more we've gone through this process and the more I've learned about, uh, annexation plans and development plans and so on and so forth, the more confident I, I become in that statement. Um, but our professional opinion would be that it would be in the city council's best interest to take a tempered approach to reducing that millage over time as opposed to going directly there this fiscal year.
Yeah, I can say this, this is four point seven and all this, all these is taken in, uh, quite a bit. in quite a bit of assumptions. Like, you say this is, the fund balance is based on twenty-five percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this fund balance, and ten percent growth?
Yes, sir.
So, if we don't receive ten percent growth, which is, which is one of the things concerned me, right, is this ten percent growth. And I know we've been pretty fortunate in the last couple of years to see a lot of growth, but right now, I think our, our growth is finna slow down, okay, and everything, because basically on the area, we really have left to develop is, is the wellness way. We can talk about increasing everything in the downtown, every commercial and everything, but there's nothing on the book to do that. And if anybody have not noticed, in the last seven, eight months, I don't think it's been one project that's come before this city for, to be done in this city. Okay? All the projects we really worked on in the last seven, eight months has been the projects that was on the book prior to this, this council being seated. So, I, I'm a little concerned about, about that ten percent growth. Are we going, we may do it this year and maybe, but I, I think we gonna be looking at a downturn, because I haven't seen hardly any projects, new projects, for growth, really, that's signifying any growth coming to this council since, since December or so. I think the last real project we saw was a couple of car washes and, and storage units and everything, but other than that, for developments and everything, no. And I do know we're getting ready to annex in a lot of property, we're trying to annex in, which can help this year with the ten percent growth, maybe, okay? But, in the future, that's what concerned me, if we still are lowering this millage rate and everything, and keep dropping it every year, and you don't have the, don't meet these assumptions, like the ten percent growth rate and all these things, where are we going to make up this deficit? We mentioned about the ambulance service being put in, okay? Three point six million dollars, that's been added. Have the twenty-seven budget taken into consideration, because my understanding now, we're going to do only two ambulances this year. Next year, you want to get to four. So, in here, in any scenario, did you include another three point six million dollars for four, two more ambulances during that term? See, I don't think it's been included there.
You did on the one you showed me.
See, and everything.
Can you show them the one you showed me today?
So, you know, and a lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of, we added a lot of, lot of spending to this, to our budget in doing these workshops, like the ambulance, okay? And I'm not, I, I'm in agreement, maybe we need it, but we may be rushing into this thing with ambulance service too fast. How are we going to actually pay for it and everything? Are we going to charge our residents twice for ambulance service? Because are we going to actually stop paying the county for ambulance service? If we only have two ambulances, how are we going to meet that goal of trying to keep ambulance, at a, answer that call to all the services we get? When we get three, four calls, two ambulances not going to be able to handle it. So, you're going to have to go to four. Is the county going to still supplement, so we still have to pay the county and we, and our residents paying here, too?
Well, we're not doing our jobs if that happens, because that's, that's for us as the representatives of the people. We can't, I, I think that to assume that we're going to have all the expenses and none of the revenues is overly conservative, and it would be bad practice for us to incur the expenses without the agreed revenues.
Well, 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 let me, let me finish.
We should be holding other people accountable to making sure we're not duplicating.
You're exactly right. During the workshop, I asked this one question, and I haven't gotten the answer. Exactly how much we pay the county now for ambulance service?
Two point six.
Two point six. We finna take on three point six million for ambulance service, just for two.
Plus bill.
Okay. Now, how much are we, are we going to actually get that back from the county?
And that's what I think we have to task our city manager to go do, and those are the conversations that's being had. He's had a meeting since that workshop. I heard from several different people about it, from the county and the city level. So, we can't, and here's another thing for folks watching and also the folks on the dais, and I think this is problematic, is when, as the government, we say, we need to have all the answers right now, it's having, it's being analysis, paralysis by analysis. We have to wait for the whole year to go by. Look, if I'm wrong, and I'd like you to show them the four point two formula that we were working on, if I'm wrong about the four point two, and, and I think all of you know why the four point two is important to me, why that's significant to me, if I'm wrong about it, and we had to raise the millage next year, let's say I'm wrong, let's say I'm wrong about projections, we know that we have sixteen million dollars in the bank right now that we can bill against. We know in year two, we're still financially solvent, because we have that sixteen millions we're drawing against. If I'm wrong, then as we come into next year, we're going to see that the projections were off, and we can adjust. And if that means we have to go up, look, I'll tell the public right now, if I'm wrong about our growth rate, then I'm going to be coming back to you. We're at four point eight now. If we have to come back next year and go to four point six, we're still down from the four point eight. So, when we're ten percent under, and we just got our May report, we're sixty-six percent through the year at the end of May, we're operating at fifty-eight percent. We have consistently been six to ten percent under our operating expenses this year to date. This gentleman here knows what he's doing. He's going to keep us on track. We're in an extremely volatile environment that is growing a lot, and to assume we're not going to grow, I think is irresponsible. We're assuming we need more firefighters because we're growing. We're presuming we need more streets because we're growing. We're presuming we need more staff because we're growing. We're not going to grow, and if we do grow expenses without increasing the revenues and holding our staff accountable to collect those revenues in the form of grants, negotiations, intra-local agreements, then we're not doing our job. So, I don't think we can honestly sit here and say, expenses are going to go up, but revenues aren't, unless we're just saying, we don't want to be held accountable and we just want to bill the taxpayers. Now, the caveat to that is why, what I started with, which is, if we choose to remain a bedroom community, then I agree, we can't cut taxes. But if we want to be a place for people to live, work, and play, then we are sitting in a really good financial situation to be able to give back to the taxpayers what never should have been taken from them in the first place.
Well, in old, in twenty-two, when we decided to raise these, or raise the millage and everything, I, I said it, and I agree with them, and it went to five point oh six. And had not we done that, all these roads and everything, everybody repaired the sidewalks, roads and everything that they enjoying out there right now, and the capital projects wouldn't have been allowed. See, because when I came on this council in twenty twenty, basically, we had no funds in, in, in the capital projects. We had no money to do sidewalk, we had no money to fix our streets. So, if we wanted to do that, what I hear everybody, hey, what are we doing about our roads? What are we doing about our sidewalk? What are we doing about this infrastructure? So, we sat down and we made the determination, hey, no, I didn't come here with intentional raising the rate, however, we felt like we needed to raise the rate. We raised the rate, and I didn't agree with what they, the proposal was five point seven five. And no way I could get to five point seven five. I settled on five point oh six, I think we was pretty good. I think we went back to four point eight last year in, in, in looking at everything, but really and truly right now, I'm sitting here saying, I don't want to go nowhere below where we are right now. You can roll back all you want, and we can be there, and you can take from the fund balance and try to balance your account. However, as I think it was put earlier by Mr. Bain, trying, trying to use that money to keep paying everything every year, it's not going to work, okay? You can only spend that dollar one time.
Totally agree.
So, you, you spent it, you spent it, you can spend it this year to balance, try to balance your budget, and you should never try to balance your budget with your fund balance, period.
Except in this case, I agree with you, a hundred percent. In this case, we are over our fund balance requirement by sixteen million dollars. We have to come up with a plan for that. And folks, if we want to say we're not going to do any of the capital projects, and I've asked the public to give me this feedback, if we want to say no capital projects, let's take that sixteen million, figure out how to divide it over the next four years, and just plain give it back to the taxpayers. Because I don't think it ever should have been collected.
Here's one of the reasons you probably sitting there with a, or we sitting there with a little bit of extra money in, in the fund balance and everything, that's, as one of the council members' goals we were trying to get to, yes. We tried to get a little bit more money in there, because we want to buy some property. For example, we got the whole year property that, I think, to be, come in on that. So, well, we wanted to be able to have a fund there to go, to do that. We have other work, projects that we just refusing the fund right now, which I think will be very beneficial, which is meet us in the middle. These kind of monies and funds was in their fund balance to try to help pay for these projects and get them going.
But that's not what we were told. That's not what we were told.
That's probably not what you was told, because the people that's telling you and running things now wasn't here when we made the decision and what.
No, we were told, we were told we had to raise the millage because we couldn't afford police and fire. That's what we were told. My business was threatened from that podium right there, because I questioned it. And we were misled as the public. We were misled.
No, you also, and during that same time.
And I'm not going to mislead this public. I'm talking about projects, and I want them to know what projects I'm talking about. So, we were misled, and Mr. Mayor, I think you were misled, and I don't blame you for being misled.
At the same time, we not only missed, a matter of fact, I had members come in here and actually telling me not to raise the city, city employees' pay, okay? Not only did we raise the police to try to keep them competitive and everything, and the firemen and the city, because we were trying, we say, hey, we're not going to wait to twenty twenty-six and try and, and jump to fifteen dollars an hour, when we had employees out there suffering, only making ten, eleven dollars an hour. So, we did, did a thing across the board, we raised them, so yeah, that's another reason we raised the rates. To try to get them up and actually go up. I had actual residents come in and say, hey, the rule, the law say twenty twenty-six, so just pay them ten dollars an hour. I'm not going to do that to anybody.
And you and I are on the same page with that, and the problem was.
Here's the other thing, we raised the police salaries to try to be comparison. At one time, when we raised them with, with the increase, we raised them and made them the highest paid agency in the area, but guess what? A month later, Lake County raised, Groveland raised, and now we right back. And just, in this new budget, which we're not really looking at, we just gave the fire department a fifteen percent pay raise this year. And, well, then we turn around and gave the police eighteen percent pay raise to get them all up there. So, where's this money coming from?
It's in the budget. We can do it at four point two.
Well, it's in the budget for this year, but you start cutting, where it's going, because they also, every year, the fire get a four percent increase, police get a four percent increase. All these things is in there.
Yeah. And that's why if we're a bedroom community, it doesn't work, because if we're capping our taxes at three percent, and we don't have any commercial, or we don't have investment property, we lose the value of those taxes. So, I think, I, I'm for four point two. I want to fix where we went sideways. It's very important to me to do that. I don't want to do it over five years. I think we can do it now. We have sixteen million dollars in the bank to get us there, and I don't mean in savings. For anybody who's not familiar with it, we have our minimum plus sixteen million that was taxed to the citizens without a verbalized plan. We have a responsibility to do something with that for the benefit of the citizens. I don't mind giving it back to the citizens. I don't mind doing meaningful projects, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote under any circumstance to keep taxes the same or go a penny above rollback, because that's, it's just not right. We need to give this money back to the citizens. It never should have been taken from them.
I'm in total agreement with you on that, and, you know, I mean, I was really educated through a lot of this budget process, but maybe through that, not as much as when I was looking at YouTube videos, which really educated me on where, you know, when, when it was diluted down, I mean, right, so we could see it right in front of our eyes, how we could really grow, and how we really were taking the taxpayers' money at four point eight eight. And I, I pledged when I ran it, it would reduce taxes, so that's why I want to make a motion right now to have our advertising rate at four point five nine.
A second.
I have a motion for to make.
We're going to have a conversation, though.
So. I have a motion in a second for the, to make the, what is it, four point what?
Four point five nine.
Five, five nine. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Y'all had your chance. So, just so everybody knows, I did four point seven before we had anything come back from Mark, Mark Jordan. That number was done based off the fact that we had reduced ten million dollars out of the fire for Fire Station Two, which was a million dollars a year, because that was debt service that we ended. So, that was an easy way to go from four eight eight to that. So, that's why that four point seven got there, was because I started on this before we even knew what the rates were going to be, or what our growth was, or anything else. We went out there. In year twenty-nine, we retire some debt, so there's another point one five there. The two years that become an issue are the middle two years. And here's what I will tell you, is that you do have to cut the size of government in order to cut taxes. It's just the way it is. You can't just say, I'm going to cut taxes and not have the financial side behind it. So, while I don't have an issue with four, five, nine, I mean, it's within seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the four, seven, which I think we can make. I think it's also incumbent upon us to find those cuts, because Mr. Murray's not wrong. Although what they did, I don't like, but let's remember that we did not fund some capital projects correctly, speaking specifically of the wastewater. And that's how we all have two hundred dollar water bills now, is because they did a forty percent increase on our water rates. So, when we go into these, I need a rock-solid five-year and at least a ten, if not a twenty-five year, capital improvement plan of especially the big stuff. I don't care so much about little stuff, but I am, I was aggravated when it happened, and I think it was poor planning, and I'm not blaming anybody else, but when you come in and you do a backdoor tax increase by raising water rates forty percent, that makes me more aggravated than saying, okay, we tried to get to four point two, but we couldn't get there. It's two different things. But that water rate one rubs me wrong, and I wasn't here to do it, and it was a long-term thing, a long-term getting there, because for years, it was kicked down the, the can was kicked down the road. I don't want to kick cans down the road. So, if you're going to get to four, five, nine bill, you got to do the work. And I need a plan, I need a rock-solid plan, because I'll get my hands dirty and I can get in there, and there's places that I'd like to cut. I made a motion for four, six last year, when we ended up with four, eight, and I had a bunch of stuff on the table to cut. It didn't get cut, now it's here, and nobody's going to want to cut it. But, you know, it's, if you're going to get in there and you want to do those things, you actually have to make year-over-year reoccurring cuts if you're going to cut taxes. And so, while I appreciate where you're going with it, it's going to take work to do, and I think Rick's going to have to dig in. I know we're already looking at targeted annexation, especially on the commercial sector. I think the CRA portion is probably incorrect. Not that Scott did anything wrong, but I think that once we see the lumberyard come on, you know, discussion about whether Johnson Market's going to come on, there's at least another thirty to forty million dollars in projects that are in the next two years. So, I think the CRA does start building, I think there's a lot of things that are ready to tick over. So, can we get there? Yes. But I'm not going to get there if we do not have a plan that I am super comfortable with, that says, here's where we're at, because I don't like those surprises, and I think it was irresponsible and a disservice for what happened with the water rates, and that is on council, and I'm not blaming old councils, and, but it was a, it was a council problem for decades. It was not a short-term council. And I don't want to set that up. I don't want my name attached to that when somebody looks at it fifteen years from now and goes, oh, by the way, Todd Howard was being a fiscal conservative and wasn't paying attention, wasn't minding the store, and they sold out everything. So, I just want to.
I appreciate your concern.
And then, and let me say this, Mr. Howard, and you're right, we rate, there was another thing we did last year, a couple of years ago, but as you say, the can was being kicked down the road. And when we came in here, it was a lot of tough decisions had to be made, and I wasn't afraid to make them tough decisions. We had to go out, we did, went out and did the water study and everything, and they came back with the recommendation, so we took the recommendation in, and yeah, your water bills went up. But guess what? Clemell wasn't the only city that was doing these same. We all had the same problem. If you notice, if you remember, Groveland was worse than Clemell, when they were, they were paying four, five hundred dollar water bills at the same time. And I was like, wow, okay. Taxes hadn't been raised over seven years, but yet and still, we couldn't get our street fixed, we couldn't get sidewalks in, we couldn't, we had no money in the capital requirement budget whatsoever. So, yes, we, these were the decisions we had to make, are we going to move our city forward? And I'm hearing people are asking for sidewalk, people, what are we doing about our streets? Talking about the wastewater treatment plant. If we had done that on time, instead of kicking down the road, we probably could have saved ourselves twenty million dollars. Because that project was probably been going in twenty twenty, twenty and twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, at a twenty-three million dollar, but then when we finally made the decision in twenty-two or so to do it, it cost us forty-eight million dollars.
You're not wrong about that, but the impact fees were also not properly assessed during that time.
Well, you got to, well, that's what.
I think Mr. Howard's right about having, if we know what we're looking at twenty, twenty-five years down the road.
Right.
We can plan for it. at 20, 25 years down the road, we can plan for it. Yeah, we do have a motion in a second. I'm ready to support these two at the end. So I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
You're right. I'm interested in the impact fees. You mentioned impact fees. We did the study on impact fees. We even had trouble getting the impact fees approved.
I think to Mr. Howard's point, it predated you, sir. I mean-
Well, these, these were some of the decisions this council, we, us, well, none of you all was here, but we had to make these decisions. And we had to fight tooth and nails to get the impact fee. So that's where some of the money is now that we got in the impact fees. We able to do some of the new fire stations and things like that, and some of the funds that's coming in. So looking out for the future. My thing is, right now, we, I'm not really to vote for nothing less than where we are right now, 4.8, because once we go down two, three years down the road, we gonna have financial trouble. Okay? If you keep reducing this tax. And it's a lot harder in the long run to try to add, go back and redo it.
It will be my mission, so long as I am on this council and living in this city with you, sir, to make you comfortable with reducing taxes. I promise you, I will always be there for you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, as Ms. Murray said, I'm not willing to leave the previous, future councils in the shape that I found the council in, the financial trouble I found it in when I came in here. And at most, I only have three more years if I decide to run another term. There'll only be two years, so I'll be at my term limit after another term. So I want to make sure, of course, what I'm looking at right now, if I walked out at the end of another three years, I'm leaving the council with a very bad taste, you know, and a bad situation, because we gonna be in a deficit.
I'll make sure that doesn't happen, sir. I promise you. I will work tirelessly to make sure this city is financially solvent. And we do have a motion in a second, so.
I'd like to call for a vote.
I go around, I go around the area, and every county municipality is, is trying to raise their rates, and we the only one that's trying to decrease.
That's right. We can put that on our sleeve and advertise it all day long.
Let's be real, because we made a promise to people that we would lower taxes and everything on our campaign and everything. We gotta be realistic here and keep the city moving forward. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, 4.59.
Motion in a second for, uh, setting the middle rate at 4.59?
4.59 is correct.
4.59. And what this means, people, if this vote go through, basically, we cannot go any higher, but we can always lower the rate at the final.
A girl can dream.
And everything. So all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote nay. Motion passes 4 to 1. Okay?
Thank you.
Hold on. Scott? If four votes is all it needs to go that low, below, below, I forgot to ask that. Is it four to go, 4.9, since it's below the rollback?
No, sir. Just a simple majority.
Okay, for the 4.5? Okay, thank you.
4.2 is also a simple majority, right?
Yes.
All right, just making sure.
Anything below 4.81?
Thank you for your hard work. That gentleman has worked, I can only imagine how many times he's run those reports. He's done a great job.
Item number 18, an introduction for ordinance number 2025-025.
An ordinance under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land contiguous to the present city boundaries, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
Yes. Does anyone in the public wish to, you know, huh? Well, I mean, let me, let me say this to the council. This is something you all started doing. As I told you before, it's always been a pleasure of this council. When you do an intro, we just do the introduction, and we vote yea and nay, and move on. But this council has always said they wanted to hear from some of the public. So it's up to you all, where do we go from here?
We do need to, right?
I'd rather not. But I know Christian wants us to open it up for the public.
No.
No, I, my, the point I was really just making about ordinances is that normally, if you want to make big changes to them, it's better to do it between the first and the second reading, as opposed to at the second reading, because then you might have to renotice it. So I'm not gonna get in the way of y'all voting for a first reading of an ordinance. Not tonight.
And we do not have to have public input on this. That's up to him.
No, you don't have to. No, it's not up to me. It's something that you asked for. You all asked for this.
Have what?
Oh, yes, you have.
I think we have to.
No, you don't.
No, we don't. We never did before.
No, there doesn't need to be a, there doesn't need to be a full public hearing on the first reading.
As I've stated several times, when it came to introduction, all we did was read the ordinance, read the motion, and then we take a vote, yea and nay, whether we gonna let it go. We never used to have public comment on introduction. This is something this required, this council have been requiring.
If someone does want to have public comment about it, they do have to be given an opportunity. You just don't need a full public hearing.
I think, so just to be clear, because I was one who was part of this, what Christian has done for us was to say, if you wanted to make major changes, you should make them under the intro if at all possible. That was all, so I didn't, we didn't need to have a public hearing. But if we wanted to make major changes, it should have been made in that conversation.
And he's also saying, if the public wishes to speak on it, we should not deny them that opportunity to speak.
That's true. And if we gonna sit here and talk about making public changes, changes and everything, then the public need to weigh in. See? So that's why, that's why it's always been, hey, it's a yea and nay, and move on.
I have a suggestion on that.
Motion to approve item 18, ordinance number 2025-025, intro to CarMax expansion annexation.
Second.
We don't need any public comment, right? Okay, all right. We have a motion for approval for introduction, item number 18, ordinance number 2025-025. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Move on. Item number 19, introduction, introduction for ordinance number 2025-026.
An ordinance of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting this small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for the City of Claremont, Florida pursuant to the local government comprehensive planning act, chapter 163, part 2, Florida statutes, setting forth the authority for adoption of the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, setting forth the purpose and intent of the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, providing for the adoption of the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, establishing the legal status of the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, publication, and an effective date.
Motion to approve item 19, ordinance number 2025-026, intro to CarMax expansion.
Second. I have a motion in a second for approval, introduction, ordinance number 2025-026. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Any none? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Motion passes. Item number 20, introduction for ordinance number 2025-027.
An ordinance under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Claremont, referred to in chapter 122 of ordinance number 289C, Code of Ordinances, rezoning the real properties described herein as shown below, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
I make a motion to accept item number 20, ordinance number 2025-27, intro to CarMax expansion rezoning.
Second. I have a motion in a second for introduction of ordinance number 2025-027. Any further discussion? Any none? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Motion passes 5.0. Item number 21, introduction to ordinance number 2025-027.
Ordinance 2025-029, I believe, is?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending chapter 119, section 119, 123, to establish an expedited building permit issuance process for residential subdivision plats pursuant to section 173.073, Florida statutes, amending chapter 119 of the city code, to require approval of plat submittals within the city limits by an administrative authority and to incorporate other statutory requirements pursuant to section 177.01, Florida statutes, providing for conflict severability, codification, the administrative correction of scrivener's error, publication, and an effective date.
Motion to approve item number 21, ordinance number 2025-029, intro to plats.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for approval, ordinance number 2025-029, intro. Any other further discussion? Any none? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion passes 5.0. Item number 22, for consideration of resolution number 2025-021R, plat approval.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for interim procedures for the preliminary plat and final plat approval, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, publication, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-21R.
Hold on. We need, we need staff. Who's presenting this, Kirk?
Really, really, I am there. Yeah. You know, so here's the situation. We, the Florida legislature passed a new law saying that the, well, a couple of things, but one of the most important things is that plats will no longer be approved by legislative bodies. That means you. No more plat approvals, period. So the requirement now is that we have to approve all plats administratively. The last ordinance will amend your code to do that on a permanent basis. But the problem is, we actually have to be doing this now. So I'm asking you to consider a resolution as a patch, so that we're following state law, which preempts our law, right now, to allow for administrative approval of the plats.
So let me ask this question, Mr. Waugh. With item number 21, approve that, basically, we creating the ordinance to do that?
Yes, sir.
But we still need to act on 22, item 22 tonight?
Yeah, because the ordinance isn't the law until-
It isn't the law yet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Second.
I miss you.
He had already put the motion out there. It's just been, I was gonna have to bow.
So, well, the other question I got on that, by approving this here, we can go ahead and approve this tonight, and this just, it just goes away, right?
The way I see it, yes, mayor, because the statute they passed already overrides what we've got. So we need, well, what it says right now is that your plats are approved by you. But what this will do is it'll make your planning director the person who administrates-
We don't have to look at plats no more.
You will, unless you want to for fun, you will not have to ever-
Well, this always, it's just been fill a square anyway, because they was always approved during another process, and then it just come to us as just procedural. So I have no problem. We have a motion in a second for approval, item number, resolution number 2025-021R. Any further discussion?
No.
Any none? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Motion passes 5.0. I, reports. Mr. Van Wagner?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Waugh.
Briefly, we have a lot of legislative updates coming that will harmonize us with the code. We'll have some more on August 12. A lot of resolutions coming your way that I'm working on with finance. It'll be coming as, I think, September, probably. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Before I go on, and since it's so many, I'm gonna need you there, let me ask you this question. As I stated earlier, SB 180, we being asked to join that lawsuit. What's your, what's-
Well, my opinion is that it's a good idea to support it, that you should consider passing a resolution for it. But that it's up to you how you do it. So for example, Lake County is considering a resolution where they, they indicate support, but they're not joining as a plaintiff. The condition for joining as a plaintiff on the lawsuit that I think you heard about, is it's a $10,000 payment to Wyssarota, which is fine. But they already have dozens and dozens of parties. So you could be a free rider and get the benefit of the litigation without being a named party. That's the bargain, best bargain in town. But alternatively, I've asked Lake County to send me a copy of their resolution indicating support, so that perhaps if you chose, we could adopt it as well.
I'm good with that.
Like you say, it's 10,000, I think I heard, read in there somewhere, it's 10,000 drawn, but then later on, it's another $5,000 or $10,000 additional.
If there's an appeal, yes.
So we can, we can, cost us a little bit of money, but we can get on there as a free rider, not freeloader, or whatever you want to call it.
It's the resolution. The fiscal conservatives over in Claremont.
Well, you know, as a supporter and not one of the plaintiffs.
Yes, sir.
So you heard that, folks, but that's one of the things, I think you all may have received the email on that, and also for consideration, as I said earlier, okay. To continue, council member Howard?
No report.
Council member Myers?
No report.
Council member Peterson?
I was at the chamber breakfast the other day, and it was the woman that's from the Libwell Foundation.
Donna.
Yeah. And she was, she was, it was all about grants for nonprofits. And it was very interesting, because I think you made a comment about hiring somebody for grants. There's so many different grants available that we're like overlooking, that, you know, if you pay somebody 70,000, they can give you a million dollars worth of grants. It's like a no-brainer to think that way. So I think we should, you know, really look into that. And look, yeah, it's amazing the amount of money that, that we're just leaving in, you know, on the ground. That's easy to pick up. And also, I know something was discussed about Lincoln Park and the grass and stuff like that. Maybe we should have, you know, code enforcement go over it. I mean, if you have grass over your head, that should be like, you know, taken care of, you know? I mean, I don't see how this is possible, but she said it is, so I believe her. And I mean, I think, I think we had a really good time with the budget. It was first time for me to see that many numbers in front of my eyes. But I really appreciate the other people on the council that can distill it down to a manageable number that's more visible and makes more sense. I just want to thank you for that. Also, a lot of discussion was, was made about our hours. So maybe we can have a little discussion on, should we think about doing that? You know, maybe we can bring it up at our next agenda.
That's it? Okay. Council member Strange?
I went to-
Let me, let me clear, because you looked at me, and everybody hesitated. One of the things we had started doing, and for reports, it's ordinary new goal first.
That's fine. Yeah, I didn't take it personal. I went to the TDC meeting last week, I think it was. We're gonna have a workshop coming up here in the next month or so. A lot of movement there on picking the five-year plan for sports-related tourism as the number-one target for Lake County tourism. That being said, Go Sports, which is the Great Orlando Sports Commission, just renewed their contract with the county. And they have a specific goal of targeting summer activities for Lake County. So I want to invite my fellow council members, I don't think these would be voting items for us, but I want our attorney to tell me. I mean, I'd love to get any feedback from the public and from council on what are potential events that we could give to the tourism office to target for us. That's one of the services that they and Go Sports will do. For example, I brought up the softball finals. Mr. Howard, you had brought that up before. But any summer, most of the FHSAA spring finals happen in the month of May, which fits into their summer. So May, June, July, August, September are the months. So if you're watching this, and you go to travel fill-in-the-blank with your children, or your band, or your friends, or your buddies, send that to me, and I will pass that along to the county to see if we can bring it here to Claremont. That's my big one. That's what I got. Thank you, everybody. This budget process was actually entertaining for me, and I appreciate it. I really do. It was fun. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick report. If you, it's okay. Last, last council meeting, council asked staff to bring back a report on the downtown establishments that sell alcohol. Kurt, if you can, so we did, we did a little report. We found that there was five bars downtown. And bars are defined, of course, as selling alcoholic beverages as their primary source of income on that. So there's five downtown. We also found that there was nine restaurants that serve alcohol, with the restaurants being defined as less than 50% of their sales from alcoholic beverages, where the primary is food. So we looked at those, and there's some temporary part-time ones, like the Elks Lodge has temporary events where they do it, First Friday Food Trucks, and the Downtown Wine Stroll all have temporary, but not a permanent downtown alcoholic sales. So we took a look after that. This is a map of kind of showing where the, where the events are, with the restaurants in green, the bars in red, and the yellow is the, of course, the temporary, the wine strolls and the food trucks. So council also asked us to look at the police calls for services. And we took the last three years, and a total of, basically, what it came down to is alcohol-related calls. Of all of these calls, came down to about 1.02% in 2023, 1.58% in 2024, and it's at 2.78 so far this year. So that was, and that's basically based on the calls in the area from Lake to West, DeSoto, Osceola, and 7th to 8th Street. So this is the calls that we're getting based on, and that's, and again, that's a very low percentage based on the number of calls that we've gotten over the years in the downtown. But Chief Grisik is here to answer any specific questions on the calls. Other than that, I know it's been a long night. So unless you have any questions.
Well, I, I thank you all for this report and everything. I think I was the one that just thought I'd ask about this. But as you can see, in 2025, that number still can continue to go up. And that's one of my concerns when I come downtown. I happen to notice that we have a lot more places that's serving alcohol in the downtown areas. And I'm getting complaints from a lot of our youngest folks don't want to come downtown now because there's so much alcohol going on, and they can't be in some of these facilities. And thank God, we don't have as many more complaints, alcohol complaints. My, it is my understanding that one of the- alcohol complaints, my, I, this is my understanding, that one of the things, I guess, one of the, uh, bars closed down about ten o'clock at night, uh, but then a lot of them wander over to another one of the places downtown that's open a little bit later. Um, when I looked at all this, it's not to try to figure out what we're gonna do, but maybe we need to take a look at how many places serving alcohol, and see can't we get more activity, more venues down here that cater to our younger crowd that not involved in alcohol and everything, I don't have nothing against people drinking, as long as they control themselves, don't get it wrong, uh, but if you go back to that map, to have this many, a staff, if many, in such a small area, that's serving alcohol is quite a bit, okay?
Well, I don't know if that's true or not, but I think that this is a great report to do and to track, I, if, if council likes this idea, my suggestion would be to send back to staff to follow up again in January with the same report, so it's six months, another six months specifically because it's also after the holidays, so we can get a really good feel for, you know, is it four because of the time of year, if it's five in January, then we know it's a summer thing, right, but I think another, if, if six months sound like a good follow-up, or do we want to do it in the quarterly?
Well, I would think with, you know, this amount of bars, it's, it's a very low alcohol arrest rate, also, I think, uh, the food trucks, there's not alcohol served at the food trucks, correct?
But we are getting a lot of complaints from cities.
Oh, yes, there's a lot of alcohol served in the food truck.
It's from the bars when people are drinking, yeah.
You go to a bar out of the, you know, not in the food truck.
Are we comfortable with a six-month check-in, or do we want to do three?
Yeah, six is good.
So, for me, I don't even want to see a check-in, I don't think it's an issue, I mean, we're looking for an issue for something to be there that's not there, I mean, they've had a hundred and forty-four calls.
We've had, we've had a lot of people come to council to complain about it, I think that's why we brought it to...
You have people out there complaining about the alcohol consumption in the downtown area, like I say, I have youth coming to me, and that's one of the areas I, I regularly try to target, to keep them off our roads, over the Disney Spring and everything, if they can, we can keep them here in the downtown, but some of them coming saying, hey, they're coming down, it's not much for them to do anymore, it's a lot of alcohol being served downtown and things like this, so...
For me, this is kind of information gathering, Todd, I don't know that there's an action item here, but I do think checking up on it is...
All I'm saying is that I'm sure that Chief Graysick has other things to do that are more important, but if you guys would like to waste his time with that, then I'm good with it.
I will waste his time every day, if that means we're the same city in Florida.
If it's gonna, yeah, I will waste it, you're right, I will waste his time every day, if it mean we gonna keep, uh, one lawsuit away because somebody got drunk, and doing something, okay, and doing, doing something.
Well, I, I'm with you, six months is fine.
Yeah, so...
January, let's make it a January.
That's fine.
There's no ordinance, I'm not looking for any ordinance or any change, except, I think one of the complaints was they serving alcohol at seven o'clock in the mornings, I know that's not happening, okay, and everything, and, uh, I think we close down most places at ten o'clock at night, so what are we gonna put in place, we're not looking to restrict like a lot of other cities doing, so, but just to keep an eye on what's going on in the downtown area, uh, he mentioned the Elks, but he didn't mention also, you got the VFW, you got the American Legion's that's serving alcohol every night down here as well, so, so you, these areas, it's not even included in this report, okay, so it's more than you think, but anyway, uh, thank you for that, mister, mister Math, um, I guess it's on me now, right? You were done, all right, first of all, let me say Champion Circle, I want to thank Mr. Otis Taylor for his, uh, Champion Circle program, but if you don't know what it is, every year, during our summer pro, during the summer, when the kids are out of school, uh, we usually run a program called Champion Circle, um, we kind of mentor a bunch of young men between the ages of thirteen and eighteen years of old, eighteen years of age, I think we had about eighteen young men in the program this year, and of course, the highlight of the program is in the, at the, the last Friday that we're there, because we usually meet on Friday and Saturday, we take them out, and we maybe give them, uh, have them interact with the police department, fire department, different, uh, places around, trying to show them a positive way of life, uh, but one of the highlights of the year is they played our police department in basketball that Friday and everything. I know Chief Graysick back there smiling and everything, else, in the last few, two or three years we've been playing, we've been doing the basketball game, the kid, these young men have been beating up on our police department, so, uh, so Chief Graysick can smile this year because they actually won the game this year, so I hate to say that, but, but, uh, we, but it, it's always a good event, and I want to thank every, all our departments that was involved, uh, the fire department, the police department and everything, that took time, uh, with the young men and everything, and, and tried to make a positive influence on their, on their, on their life, because these are some, uh, young men that have some challenges in life and everything, so, um, I would like to always commend Mr. Taylor for, uh, heading that up every year, and, uh, being a big part of it, and of course, next year, anybody out here got some free time, want to be out there with us, please come join us, you know, uh, I think this year, we only went five weeks for it, previous years, we went six to eight weeks before, we kind of cut it down this year, so, but thank you, and July fourth, thank the staff for all that, I don't think we had a council meeting since July fourth, so I want to thank the staff, I got a lot of good comments, the fireworks were fantastic and everything, uh, um, we need to probably put a little bit more money in the budget for a little bit better, a little bit more fireworks next year and everything, so...
Well, staff did an amazing job pivoting with the weather, too.
Right.
That was, that's tough, and so that was really good.
Right, uh, I know I got called, I think Mr. Van Wagner called me a couple days in advance, wanted to know if we gonna, if I want to cancel, and I told him, no, we gonna go ahead, because it rained every Fourth of July, and good Lord blessed us with some pretty good weather, and it rained right at the end of the fireworks, but it didn't stop the fireworks, uh, we could have had the incident they had in Winter Park where lightning struck their fireworks and set it off premature and everything, at six o'clock in the evening, the lightning struck and hit their fireworks display, and they had fireworks going everywhere premature, okay? Other thing is people, parents, please let the parents know tax-free days, like here, kids getting ready to go back to school, so, so for, uh, for the schools, and then also for hurricane supplies, they can't remember the exact date, but they out there, uh, get out there and, and let the kids know, school's getting ready to start, so please, people, uh, be aware of that, and what's the fourteenth, school start on the fourteenth, is it? Yeah, well, so that's before, I think, right after the next council meet, um, it brought up again, meeting times, I think, uh, council member Strange, you mentioned before that you had a survey, you want to go back to six thirty, at least one of the meetings, but it's been called up, and of course, that's been one of the biggest complaints I've, I've gotten ever since we changed these things, so I would like to see that brought back to the city council as soon as possible, like the next agenda if, if possible, whether we will.
It is something that I got, I got the five thirty, wasn't even good enough, it was the six thirty.
Right.
Now, mind you, twenty-six thousand voters, sixteen thousand homes, I mean, th- the numbers we're talking about aren't a huge percentage, but there definitely was a, a marked opinion on the subject, my concern with the late time is, when it goes late, what happens to each of us when we're making decisions? And making sure that we're making good decisions, you know, it's, it's seven o'clock, it's not too late right now, but I've been going since six thirty this morning, and if it...
Like we've gone with the other meetings, going to midnight, ten, eleven, twelve, and we, you don't make good choices at ten, eleven, midnight.
That's my concern, so I...
And we don't seem to know how to edit ourselves up here, so, I mean, I'm just being real.
Well, let me, let me say this, I, I'm not gonna sit here and say I don't make a choice at, at midnight, at midnight, because a lot of my life had been spent in the middle of the night doing jobs, and, and protecting lives in the middle of the night where I had to make good choices, so I'm not gonna say I, I limit the time of day, what choice, whether I make good choices or not.
Well, studies prove that.
Uh-huh.
Studies show that you make better choices during...
But the best time would probably be like ten, eleven in the morning.
Exactly, that's, that's why you don't sign contracts at midnight, you do it at noon, you do it at nine AM.
I'll just follow up with the press.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've signed midnight contract, three o'clock in the morning contracts.
Yes, but, but I'm sure that's where you're in the service.
The other point I want to point out here, the time on your, on, uh, taking, running your council, you have to be aware of what you're putting on your agenda, okay, I didn't say it just over and over and over and over.
Sir, it wouldn't matter, every agenda...
But we still have people talking, 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 you can have, we can have agendas where there's nothing on there, we've had plenty of that, where they've been minor, like our last one went for five hours, and we didn't have, we, we didn't have a help, you know what I'm saying, lengthy one, it's just that some of us do not know how to edit ourselves.
That's true, but then again, Ms. Myers, you know, we've had council meeting prior to this council, we, we used to come in pretty much time, we were coming in here at six thirty, and we were done by eight o'clock.
Exactly.
See, and everything, but...
But, but it's different.
And when I first, uh, let me make this point, when I first was elected, my first few, a lot of my meetings was going eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, but what we started doing, we started adjusting the agenda and saying, hey, we know this is gonna be controversial, so we're not gonna bring it here, we gonna mush, push this back, and you know, we, we looked at things, and we had to make that judgment and everything, and not try to, uh, push everything on the agenda at one time.
Well, the only thing, we, we frequently have over twenty items on the agenda.
Yes.
I mean, like, every time.
Yeah.
So, unless we slow down the process of making decisions...
Right.
Then we're still gonna have twenty items on the agenda.
Exactly.
Can I ask to wrap this up, because if y'all are hearing that?
Yes, it's thundering, it's grumbling.
Red and yellow, you know, we need to wrap this up.
All right, Ms., Ms., uh, I'm not sure which sidewalks, Ms., did she leave, Ms. Horzington was talking about, uh, but I, I will get with her and find out what, what that all about, but I, uh, Mr. Van Wagner, we may want to have, uh, public service go and take a survey, I know I talked to them, I know one area that was a particular concern on the corner of, uh, Distas and, and Highland at one point, uh, and I'm be honest with you, I don't know whether they ever got out there and fixed it up, because we had over, overhanging, broken, uh, sidewalk, and one gentleman was having trouble with his, what's called scooter, trying to get through over there, uh, but I'm not sure what you, uh, back to the growth, I would talk to Ms. Horzington, but when you find these kind of things in your community, our code enforcement is not out there riding around every day looking for violations and stuff like this, so if you see them in your, in your community, you need to bring it to the attention of code enforcement, call Kirk, I'll call him and say, hey, take a look at this, and we'll get code enforcement out there right away and start a case and everything, uh, Ms. Horzington, I think she knows this, we've been through this too many times with her, and know if, uh, things get overgrown, we, we bring it to code enforcement, notify code enforcement, and they go out there, because code enforcement, we don't have enough of them to just ride around every day looking, looking for cases and everything. Huh? Well, you just call Kirk.
Well, it could be a little form on the website, I mean, you can put a Google form on the website that goes to his email.
I call Kirk all the time. Yeah, see? He's, I mean, she'd say it, and we go out there, we'll take care of it, uh, and, and Mr., Mr. Joe Marcy, thank you for recognizing our police and their, their community watch, I've said over and over again, any body living in these subdivisions and everything, if you want help, uh, want the police to come in and do community watches, uh, they're happy to do that, we got them going all over, that's something where they started a few years